Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the November 2nd, 2011, meeting of the City Council which is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being video-recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, Cable Channel 2, and are closed captioned for hearing-impaired viewers. Please note, some of the customers of Cox Communication who do not have a cable box can view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meeting, as well as other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclvtv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV and the web on the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m., and also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, and I do stress "on the agenda", citizen participation in public hearing items we have available, a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online, in the clerk's office, or at the front of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comment portion of the agenda, citizens' participation, or specified public hearing items. Before we proceed with the agenda, would you please rise for the invocation given this morning by Pastor Joel Menchakcha at Amistad Cristiano Church, and please remain standing for the pledge.
God, we thank you for this beautiful morning. We ask for wisdom, understanding, for our councilmen, councilwomen, and we ask a special blessing over our mayor. We ask it in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now proceed with the ceremonial portion of the agenda. How was Halloween at your house? Councilwoman Tarkanian and I were just speaking about Halloween, so we hope you all survived. I see you're here, so you did. But commenting about how beautifully everyone acted, and I know we had hundreds at our house, and I got fed up this year after 35 years in the same house of just handing out candy with nothing coming back. So I said to everybody, "You will either recite a poem, you'll sing a song, or you'll dance. If you do not do one of those things, you will not get a treat." And I held tight with that. I must tell you, three young men, probably in their early teens or middle-school years, were so shy they couldn't do it, so they left. I've never seen a child leave a bag of candy, beyond, and one girl. But the cutest thing was at the latest hour, about 8:15, there were a group of teenagers, and then a mother, and this little tiny blond boy. And he looked up at me as soon as I said that, and he said, "Can I say de puez of allegiance?" Ha! So I put my hand on my heart, told everybody that was in the back, I said, "Be quiet." This little sweet boy went through the Pledge of Allegiance, got to the point, "One nation under God, into wiz-wo-wo." And just continued. It was so adorable. So I hope you had a great Thanksgiving, Halloween, and I can tell you, Thanksgiving's coming. So before we forget, I know City Council joins me in wishing you all a very safe and happy Thanksgiving, and to give thanks for the wonderful world in which we live. The second thing I want to do is announce that Councilman Barlow is not here today. The reason is, his baby girl, Samira Lauren Barlow, was born yesterday, November 1st, five pounds, three ounces, so a handful, 18.3 inches, and born at 8:59 in the morning. So we congratulate you, Councilman Barlow, and wife Samira. And so, this morning, it's really an exciting time for us, and I am wondering, would you like me, we are recognizing a wonderful woman and man, and would you like to stay put while we introduce it, or would you love to come up? Here we go. This is the ceremonial portion of the agenda, and our first, for our first item, we're going to recognize the November Citizens of the Month. This month, I have the great honor of choosing the Citizens of the Month, and I can't think of more deserving couple. Please join me in welcoming our Citizens of the Month, Will and Teresa Face, joined by sons Bob and Don. And I mean, this gentleman, look at him, is he fabulous? He's only 75. Unfortunately, Teresa could not join us today, but we have Will, who is right here, and I'm going to share a little bit about this incredible couple, and then ask Will to maybe say a few words. Will and Teresa have been married, oh my gosh, are you lucky, 78 years. That is just, wow. I wish, I bet you didn't know that at the beginning. They've lived in southern Nevada for 67 years. On October 14, Will will celebrate his 100th birthday. Both Will and Teresa have unfailingly supported this community since their arrival in 1944. Will was among the first volunteer firefighters and among the first workers at the Nevada Test Site in the 1950s. In 1976, at the young age of 65, Will retired from a position at the casino, and instead of slowing down, answered the call of the people running for the state senate. Will served in the state senate for two terms, and while in office, gave priority to equal rights, education, senior citizens, and veterans. Teresa's service was recognized in 1996 when she was selected as Clark County Pioneer Mother of the Year. Teresa has been the Face family's rock throughout the years. We all know that, women, don't we? She has provided her three sons a model of caring, support, hard work, sacrifice, commitment, and compassion that has woven its way through the entire family. In 2008, the Clark County School District honored the two of them by placing their names on the Wilburn Teresa Face Middle School in Summerlin. Their three sons have blessed them with six grandchildren, all of whom have been very successful. They also, believe it or not, have five great-grandchildren, and four great-great-grandchildren. Awesome. What fabulous genes! I want to thank Will and Teresa for being one of the greatest families of Las Vegas, and I want to invite Will to make sure you give him, and on behalf of Teresa, for both of them, a rousing round of applause, please. Now, we have with us, and if you will present this, I will take this on this side, a beautiful plaque, and in addition, if you will look to your right, over this way, you'll see a sign that will hang outside of City Hall on 4th for the entire month. We thank you for all you've done for our citizens, for your service to our residents, and now, Will, might I ask you to say a few words? Being a shy individual because you are state senator, you cannot have been a senator and be shy.
I would just like to thank everybody for this great honor, and also happy to report that this city is in extremely capable hands. And if I had known being 100 would be so much fun, I would have done it a lot sooner.
Well, I'm Bob Fess, and this is one of the grandest days in history. My mom regrets that she could not be here. As the mayor said, it's a wonderful family, but the real strength is in my mother. My dad will acknowledge that, and he's done marvelous things. And I said, "Mom, we really ought to talk about you, because you really are the foundation of the family. What have you done I can talk about? What is the greatest challenge that you have overcome?" And she thought for a moment and said, "Putting up with your father for 78 years."
Is that beautiful? Congratulations! We're so proud and thrilled. And so, look on 4th Street, this will be up as soon as we can get it up. Thank you. Oh, it's already gone. Wonderful. Councilman Tarkanian asked how old he was when he was elected to the state senate, and he served 76 to 84 during those years. Unbelievable. Did you serve at the same time?
Thank you very much, because a senator should always grab the microphone when it's offered. I was a freshman, thank you. I was a freshman assemblyman when Senator Fess was in his final term in 1983, and he set a wonderful example for all of us because of his endurance, durability, really. It's in the Fess genes, no question about it. I mean, his son, Bob, put Grant Sawyer in the Capitol's chair as governor back in 19, well, the election of '58, became his right-hand man at ripe old age of 25 or so, and how the time has flown. So it took a lot longer for the Fess genes to manifest themselves in terms of running for office, but Bob did it. Probably you're only 60, well, you're only 65 or 66 when you were elected, I think. So you served us proudly, and once a senator, always a senator, sir. You keep the toga on.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Congratulations. Thank you again, and I will say, with great-great-great-great-grandchildren, this is a dynasty that will go on and on and on. So we expect to see them in the senate, too. Thank you. Thank you so much. And at this time, I'd like to call on Councilman Steve Ross, who's going to recognize the Veterans' Day Parade Committee, and tell us a little bit about this fabulous parade that's coming.
Thank you, Mayor, and that's hard to top the Fess family, so give them another round of applause. What a great family. Honored to be here with you today, Senator. Well, I'm going to try to top that, it's going to be tough, but yes, the Veterans' Day Parade is right around the corner, and on Friday, November 11, 2011, the Veterans' Day Parade will be taking place in downtown Las Vegas. The parade route will take place on 4th Street between Hoover and Stewart Boulevard, starting at 10:00 a.m. This parade gets bigger and better each year, and it is the largest Veterans' Day Parade west of the Mississippi, and I think it's important that we all recognize that, how much we appreciate our veterans here in southern Nevada. We expect to see about 40,000 spectators. Before I go on, I want to bring up Billy Stojak. Billy, come on up here. Bill's a good friend of mine, he's a Veterans' Day Committee co-chairman and a Vietnam War veteran. Give him a round of applause. Thanks, buddy. Had to drag you down here, you know that. This year's parade will be led by the Nellis Air Force Base Color Guard, followed by more than 30 wounded warriors and their families. The parade will also include 5,000 military personnel, veterans, and their supporters. This is a time for us to pay tribute to the men and women who have served and are currently serving in the United States Armed Forces. I encourage everyone to attend the parade, to show your support and appreciation to our military personnel, and Billy, I want you to tell us some exciting things that we can expect in the parade.
Well, we've got it coming this year. What we have, we're honored, Pat Boone, who is known to a lot of my generation, this is going to be my generation, for sure, wanted to come into town, absolutely no cost, come up here, he's going to start off the parade with the National Anthem. Through the offices of the mayor, and a lot of help and pushing and shoving, we have a committed flyover at 11:11 with a B-1B bomber. And for those of you, that's a major project. That's not just putting a fighter plane in the air. That's the big bird. But our parade, we've got over 131 entries, we just created, finished up the lineup. It's a wonderful cross-pract room of the community. I created a buzz phrase a couple of years ago, and we were asked to rationalize the funding for a grant application, and the best I could come up with was generational continuity, because it impacts everyone, from the kids with the flags we hand out, to our senior, senior citizens. They all have an involvement. But what I want to express is the gratitude from the veterans community, the parade committee, which this is us, all four of us. Come on up. Come on up here, guys.
And music, music.
Oh, we have the 300th Army Marching Band, we have Desert Skies Pipe and Drum. I want, I lost count, it's 17 ROTCs. This is one of the things, this is Commander Wenson, come on, guys. Commander Wenson, post commander of VFW Post 1753, the oldest post in southern Nevada, 1923, I believe. This is BB Noyes, who's a veteran, and is acting as our secretary and major helper for the parade. And we have Terry Ravella, who's one of our, one of my marshals. I want to really, really thank particularly the city of Las Vegas. This is my 14th year of involvement, from the time we almost didn't have a parade. We took over the reins, it was handed off or passed the baton from a group of WWII veterans that was diminishing unfortunately every week, and the cooperation and the help from the city has just made it possible. And as you noted, we are now the largest parade west of the Mississippi, and it's not me saying it anymore, that's the news networks. There's a very good possibility we're going to have national news coverage, because just the coincidence and the coming together of several things, and I want to thank each and every one of you. We couldn't have done it. If I started naming every individual in the city that's gone way beyond, I'd have to hit the whole roster. Every single one of you, Betsy, thank you very much, Valdo, everybody, it's just been Doty Bateson, and let's not forget that lady right there. Esther Carter is just, she's been my go-to lady. Any questions I have, at times, in all honesty, people go, "How you doing, Bill?" And I go, "I need another cellphone and two more radios, it's hurting cats." But it's a great cause, it's my chance to give back to the community. Each of the folks that, we work together very well, it's the same thing, but I have to thank the city and everybody there. Thank you very much. And I hope to see it for another 14 years.
I hope so, too.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I think last year, I challenged you guys to make our Veterans' Day Parade the largest in the country. You can see how much the city of Las Vegas, and certainly the mayor's City Council, appreciates our veterans. I know Councilman Wolfson often goes out of his way on a lot of veterans-related issues, and I think it's important to note, too, how much patriotism abounds in the city of Las Vegas. We recognize the efforts of our men and women who have served this country and are currently serving this country, and we cannot do enough to recognize their efforts in protecting our freedoms and liberties.
Can I make a comment on that, sir? The amazing thing that I'm seeing is, as a result of the efforts of this community, every year, we get more and more applicants from California and Arizona. And the unfortunate, that's great for us, but why? Their communities don't even recognize it. This Veterans' Day is a three-day weekend, but not here.
You mentioned ROTCs, Bill, and I want to point that out. Folks, you may not know this, we have got some great young people in this community that are fully participating in the JROTC programs throughout Las Vegas, and if you see these kids on a corner when they need, they're having a car wash or something, get over there and help them pay for whatever they're trying to raise money for, because they're great kids, and they, too, are going to continue to protect our freedoms and our liberties for the years to come. So to all of you, thank you very much for what you do. Billy, today, we're proclaiming November 11, Veterans' Day, but that's already been done, but we're going to add our signatures to it as well. Give them a great big round of applause for what they do for the veterans in the community.
Thank you, sir. You're going to take over, man, you know that.
Looking forward to this, we know it's going to be.
Thank you, sir.
We're walking with you. We're walking.
We're going to be walking.
That is really, I mean, just, it's so exciting, and we walk, we always begin at the parade, and we walk, because that's the least we can do for our veterans, is to walk. This year, I understand, hopefully, if Esther is followed through, we have little flags that we will, we will be giving out flags as we go through with the parade. So, at this point, I would like to now ask Councilman Wolfson to recognize the American Diabetes Month. Councilman.
Thank you so much, Mayor Goodman, and Councilman Ross. Always a great job. You do a great job representing our veterans. You know, these are hard acts to follow, Senator Fess, and your family coming down. Thank you so much for sharing your day with us. What a great city we have, you know? When we first moved here, the question we get is, you know, "Well, do you, you know, do you work in a casino, and you must live under the strip?" Well, it's examples like this that show what a great community we have, what a diverse community we have, and what great citizens we have. You know, we're the largest Veterans' Day Parade west of the Mississippi today, but certainly in the future, we're going to be the largest in the country. Okay, last but not least, it is my pleasure to recognize November as National Diabetes Month. Diabetes is an increasingly common chronic disease. In recent years, there's been an increase in type 2 diabetes in children. This goes hand-in-hand with the increase in childhood obesity and physical inactivity. Diabetes is a serious disease that can cause many medical complications, and if untreated, can result in severe disability or death. Early detection is important, and self-management of blood sugar levels is crucial. In 2002, diabetes was the sixth-leading cause of death listed on United States death certificates. Overall, the risk for death among people with diabetes is about twice that of people of similar age without diabetes. Well, that's a little history. It is my pleasure today to welcome Celeste Okel, the Executive Director of the Nevada Diabetes Association, to our council meeting. Thank you so much, Celeste, for coming. The Nevada Diabetes Association is the only organization in Nevada that provides direct services to children and adults, and support for families dealing with diabetes. Celeste, why don't you share a little bit more information with us, please? We have some local folks in the audience, and then you're on television for our viewers at home, and then I have a proclamation to present you.
Thank you so much. November is National Diabetes Awareness Month, so this is a wonderful opportunity for communities like ours to rally together and raise awareness about diabetes, the effects that it has on people, and basically ways to prevent diabetes and deal with diabetes. Every 17 seconds, someone is diagnosed with this disease, and this is definitely something that makes a huge impact on all of our lives, and is probably something that affects everyone in this room in some way, shape, or form. As far as our organization goes, excuse me, we strive to make a difference in the lives of people with diabetes. We provide direct programs and services to both children and adults with type 1 and type 2 diabetes, and we do that through wonderful health and wellness programs. We have support groups for children, teens, and families affected by diabetes, as well as we're the only organization in the state to provide diabetes camping programs for children, and we have a health and wellness program that helps people who have limited income and insurance obtain valuable life-saving insulin, which is important to saving their lives. So we are dedicated to this community, and we are dedicated to helping the lives of people with diabetes, and we thank you all for allowing us here.
Celeste. If somebody wanted to get in touch with you, what is the best way to get in touch with you or your organization?
You can contact Nevada Diabetes Association. Our phone number is 702-364-5604. That's 702-364-5604. Or you could go on our website at www.diabetesnvfornevada.org.
Well, thank you so much for coming today. It is my pleasure, on behalf of the mayor and the entire city council, to proclaim November 2011 as Nevada Diabetes Month, and we ask all citizens to raise their personal awareness of this chronic and widespread disease, and to encourage children to eat healthy and sustain a healthy level of physical activity so that they are less likely to become afflicted with type 2 diabetes and all of the complications that are associated with this disease. So I present you with this proclamation, and we thank you so much for the great work you do, because to educate our citizens, and to provide programs, and provide places to go, and people to contact is a great service. So thank you very much. How about a round of applause? Thank you so much. You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much. We will take a three-minute recess, so our council people can go back and take a little break, and we'll be right back. Thank you.
[inaudible]
Well, you are lucky today. Again, thank you very much.
Wonderful.
Goodbye. Hello. Okay. I took all the papers, you're on, you took them.
Yes.
I don't need them.
How you been?
Good.
Thank you.
Happy street.
Nice.
Mom's going to tell you.
How's your life?
I take care of that.
I'm good.
All right. See you later.
Hi. How are you?
You all right?
I'm doing all right.
Something that you heard.
I hate him.
Trouble.
We already knew that.
At the condition, you were wondering about moving water from east to west.
I know.
I'm asking you.
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 I'm asking you.[1779.92]
[inaudible]
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 Okay, welcome back, everyone. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-reference to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium and state your name for the record. We will set the time at one minute because there is another public participation later on. Please state your name.
Thank you. Todd, follow 240 North 19th Street. My comments have to do with items 60 and 61. And there's no way that I can express my comments better than this person wrote it in a letter to the editor, so I'll submit that to them. The other thing is, in the coming financial debacle that we're going to have, the bloodbath that's coming, there's an article here that relates this game of life we're playing to the game of chess, and there's some good pointers in that. I'll hand that to you, too.
Mayor Goodman? Yes, please, Councilman. I just wanted to thank Todd for the copying of the articles, and I do want to know, we do read them, and I appreciate your sharing them with them because they often have great insights. Thank you.
Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning.
Other councilmen and women and people here. I'm Alan Cartcher, President of Cartcher Insurance Agency. Once again, I'm going to speak on behalf of the Human Resources Consent Items 21, 22, 23. I don't know if you have any backup for that. I'd like to see it if I can. I have a lot of questions. One, how long has this broker been on this account? Even though they might move around, I'd like to know that. Has there been other bids on this, competitive bids? Like to see if that's available. I'd like to see if there's any backup information whatsoever on this, because once again, I see a trend of rubber stamping things that just keep going on and on and on, and I'd like to see some fair business and bids on these accounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
[inaudible] Item 8, which is...
Excuse me, did you state your name in that?
Oh, my name, I talk real fast. My name is Anthony [inaudible]. One, two, three, so David. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor. Anyway, item 8, you know, citizen participation, that's wonderful. And then the one you have at the end of the day. What I'm saying is that I kind of thank the state for having the open meeting law. I don't know if all the other states have it, but it's a good thing, and it kind of let us practice our freedom of speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please, come forward? Hearing none. We'll move on to item number nine. Business items for possible action. Any items from this morning's session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, table withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we don't have any items that are need to be pulled or stricken or any of that.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item 10. For possible action to approve the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting of October 9th, 2011, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
There's a motion, please vote. Motion carries. Mr. Riggelman, is the screen up front working this time? Thank you very much. And now we move on to the items on the consent agenda. Items 11 through 43, with the exception of those we will now hear about, on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and recommended for approval by the departments and may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items the council members wish to have brought forward?
Mayor, I'd like to pull items 21, 22, and 23, just to discuss those a little further.
Thank you. Anyone else?
No, I was going to say the same.
Okay, concurred in by Councilwoman Tarkanian. With that, I move for the approval of the consent agenda minus 21, 22, and 23. Is a motion? Please vote. Please post. Motion carries unanimously. We will move to item number 21. So Ms. Brettwell, do you want to be the one to comment on items 21, 22, 23?
I believe we have Vicki Robinson here to speak to that, Mayor.
Okay, I will read it. For possible action to approve the renewal of contract with Health Plan of Nevada for Health Maintenance Organization, HMO Medical Insurance Services, $2,700,000 Self-Insurance Internal Service Fund. And I read that, and purpose and background, the city of Las Vegas currently uses Health Plan of Nevada, HBN, for its Health Maintenance Organization, HML Medical Plan. A renewal has been submitted that extends the current contract until December 31st, 2012. A rate increase of 7% has been received for 2012. This is well below current medical inflationary trends. Costs are within the approved FY fiscal year 2012 budgets. I wonder if, shall I read 22 and 3? Okay, we'll do one at a time. Approval to renew the contracts with Health Plan of Nevada, and this is in regard to the question and statements by Mr. Cartcher early on. The Lockton renewal letter dated October 11th, 2011, the City of Las Vegas Insurance Committee renewal recommendation letter dated September 20th, 2011. Good morning.
Good morning. Vicki Robinson, I'm the Manager of Risk, Compensation, and Benefits for the city. This is Tana Prince. She's our broker from Lockton, and we would be happy to address any questions that you have, specifically on HBN. HBN, as you know, is the large HMO company in Las Vegas. Many of our employees enjoy HMO, the HMO product. They prefer it so that they can take advantage of Southwest Medical. This year, the renewal rate is 7%. About 300, just over 300 of our employees are on HBN. The, my understanding is that the commission on that is the same regardless of the broker.
Thank you. I think there was a question, Mr. Cartcher, was your question, where was this put to
If we were to bid an HMO, there are not a lot of other HMOs out there, and our employees prefer HBN.
Thank you.
Could we repeat that? Who prefers HBN, and that's why we're not giving it...
Our employees would prefer HBN, I believe, to the other HMOs out there. There are very, they're very small HMOs. HBN is the largest one in Nevada.
HBN retains about 70% of the fully insured marketplace here in Las Vegas. They are the most competitively priced. We work for many employers of the size of the city, and there isn't a competitor that can usually come in within 10 or 20% of the rates that HBN offers. It's the most popular HMO. The employees here enjoy it, and it is the lowest-priced insurance option for the city and the city's employees.
So you know that it's the lowest, even though you don't put it out to bid? You just compare?
We bid most of our employers every other year or so with HBN, and of probably eight other clients that were the biannual time for us to bid this year, we didn't have one competitor come in anywhere close, within 15, 20% of the HBN rates. Again, their market share here is much like Blue Crosses might be in another, in another city. They, they're very competitive. Their Southwest Medical Clinics are very popular. There's no reason, frequently when we bid, we're check bidding. We're just kind of testing the market, but HBN is the predominant HMO. And again, their pricing structure is advantageous for the city employees.
If we were to go to another HMO, that would mean that our employees would no longer be able to have the physicians that they're used to right now. They would have to move physicians. The plan would be different.
And so even though you don't send it out to bid, you know that?
And we bid it every, usually every two years, sometimes every three years.
The only concern I had is I've noticed some things have happened where we've had, and I'm not talking about this incident, other situations, where we've had incidences where because it was the predominant health group coverage in Nevada, we were treated differently than, for example, in California and someplace else, and I just thought that was horrendous. And so I, that's why I always have a concern, and that's why I asked. Thank you.
And so to answer the question that was posed to the council before, is in its own way open to bid at any time, anybody to come in? I mean, a matter of record?
Absolutely.
It is open always to bid?
Absolutely. There is no lock-in of any contract here. If the city renewed January 1 and wanted to bid February 1. We could at any time upon the direction of the insurance committee, bid this now, bid this in February, just to give you a confirmation of the market check that I'm speaking of.
I should also point out that we do have an insurance committee. It's made up based on the labor contract that we have with the LVC EA. Three, LVC EA members and three management people are on the committee. They're the ones who make the decisions, basically, on the programs that we offer.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the question from the citizen who came forth was more along the lines, have we offered a bid out on the services provided by a broker as opposed to the choice of the broker in terms of what company they choose, or the insurance committee chooses based upon advice from the broker? So, and I've been inquiring about this and had a briefing this week from Ms. Robinson and staff, and also looked at our benefits again, and had some further research done, which was forwarded to me late yesterday, but you did it fast, so thank you very much, Vicki.
You're welcome.
So, you know, real quickly, I would say, we ought to consider, and this doesn't have to be done today, Your Honor, but I think we ought to, we ought to consider putting the broker services on all of our insurance products out to bid, but that can be something that can be easily done in coming months. And that's obviously no reflection on the incumbent broker, because I'm sure that she has done a good job. I do know this much, that she's correct when she says that HBN is about the only player in the market. And so the thing I want to be concerned with today, and the reason I asked, I actually did ask for this to be taken off of consent earlier in order that we might just have a short airing of our benefit structure, because this is a huge cost to the city, but it's a very important incentive for our employees. This is a critical thing. The benefits are very, very good. What we offer are so much better than what the state offers its employees. It's not even a close race. And what I want to make sure is, as I look at the benefit ages by breakdown, the smarter insurance buyers are always, almost always the older folks. So we see a bell-shaped curve when people are purchasing the HMO because they're buying on price, particularly younger people, and there's only 300 and some people on the HMO. We have well over 1,000 people on the Consumer Health Choice Plan, which is a very strong plan, and that one is tilting, that one's tilting toward the older folks because they're smarter buyers. So beware on this, I'm trying to get Vicki's attention here.
Hang on one second.
Yeah, I want to make sure we have our ducks in a row here. I want to make sure that we understand that, be very careful not to make the same mistake the city of, the state of Nevada has made. The employee committee that helps choose benefits is tilted toward the older employees, so they have tilted the benefits toward the older. And we lose, at the state of Nevada, we lose wonderful people to local government because they have forgotten that you're supposed to entice people into government, and benefits count for a ton, especially the first child comes along. That's when people become smarter insurance buyers. And I notice that we're, while we are a bell-shaped curve in terms of age on the HMO, and the PPO is so small, it really doesn't matter, we're starting to tilt toward the older folks on the consumer-driven health plan, a wonderful plan. You're to be commended for designing that and keeping it going.
Thank you.
But be very careful that when we're cutting benefits, as we are cutting some benefits here, and they're being cut across the board, that we do not subtract from benefits that might attract people in their 20s and 30s, because this is starting to tilt toward the older age demographics, which is a normal thing when you're having layoffs in a recession. The people that are senior, they stay. They don't retire, and the ones who are new, they can't get a job. So you see, we've got a problem there, and it's coming, and I want to make sure we head it off before, you know, before the future hits us, and then you've got to increase your premiums over and over and over again to insure older and older, older population. And that can only be solved by hiring younger people, but you can't do it until the recession ends. So in conclusion, from my perspective, I thought that the plan is doing good, that we should be proud of the plan we offer our employees, and I must say, even though it's a sensitive topic, Vicki, and I think that it's important for me to state to our public employees working for us, that we, we offer a good health plan.
Yes, we do.
And it's tax-exempt, and it's paid for with pre-tax dollars, which means, you know, if I had to choose the Hobson's choice between cutting pay and cutting benefits, I'd cut pay every day, because this way, the benefit they get is tax-protected. And so if we have to do that sort of thing, you know, and we're already slowing that stuff down.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman. There's no public hearing. We've already done that. I'm so sorry. So there is, do we have a motion on, oh, any other comments from council? Sorry. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve item 21.
Thank you very much. If there's a motion, please vote. Motion carries. Let's move on to item number 22, please. For possible action to approve the renewal of the contract with Sierra Health and Life, SHL, for a fully insured, preferred provider organization, PPO Medical Plan, $1,100,000 Self-Insurance Internal Service Fund. Let's see, Human Resources Management, Compensation and Benefits. The City of Las Vegas currently uses Sierra Health and Life for its preferred provider organization, PPO Medical Plan. A renewal has been submitted that extends the contract until December 31st, 2012. A rate decrease of 12% has been received for 2012, which is a significant price decrease due to plan design changes. Costs are within the approved fiscal year 2012 budgets. Approval to extend the contract with Sierra Health and Life for PPO Medical Insurance Services, the recommendation. Backup documentation, Lockton renewal letter, October 11, 2011. City of Las Vegas Insurance Committee renewal recommendation letter dated September 20th,
I told Vicki I would tell you briefly why we recommended on this contract that there be changes. To accommodate in-state, out-of-state, and different choices among people, you have a great option of three plans. An HMO, a PPO, both fully insured, with Sierra and Health Plan Nevada, and then the self-funded, consumer-driven. The PPO plan was very rich in benefits, and it was the most expensive plan. It was, it had also the smallest enrollment, it's 75, 76 employees. Our review of that plan suggested that where it fit on a benchmarking continuum, it should be between the consumer-driven, which is the premium choice, and the HMO, which is the lower cost. Its cost was above the consumer-driven. So for purposes of the lowest participation, the richer benefits, we re-benched marked it by comparing it to other PPO plans and put it at a price that's between the two. So now that, that continuum fits. Again, the city was paying more for this plan than others, and again, we knew it would impact the fewest people. impact the fewest people, and the benefits were richer than you would expect. So we just reestablished it as the center plan, saving the city a little bit of money, but still keeping the benefits very much in the upper quartile of the benchmark.
Thank you. Any comments from, yes, please.
I would just like to add that this year, when we looked at renewals, if we had made no changes to the plans, we would have seen significant increases across the board. Medical costs continue to go up. We do what we can to control them, but nevertheless, there's a, an old saying in insurance, the claims are the claims are the claims. So the premium has to be based on the previous year's claims experience because that's what they feel they need to cover for next year. So we looked at significant cost increases, and rather than do that, rather than have the city pay more and the employees pay more, we looked at, was there a way that we could come up with a win-win so that we could take what was, in essence, an extremely rich plan and move it down just a notch so that all of the plans continue to be very rich? They are still, as Tana said, in the upper top quartile of any plans out there. But they still are affordable for our employees. They give them really good coverage. And so, yes, we did change the plans, but it was by design that the idea was for a win-win for both the city and the employees.
What are the deductibles on each? Please.
Hang on a second. I have a little cheat sheet. The deductibles for the consumer-driven plan, I know, because it's, if you're an employee only, you get a thousand dollars in your health reimbursement account, and then you have a five-hundred-dollar, we call it a bridge. It's a deductible before the current ninety-ten plan kicks in. As of 212, it will be eighty-twenty. The deductible for employee plus one on the CDH plan is seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. The deductible for employee plus family is a thousand dollars. That's a thousand-dollar cumulative, so it's everybody in your family. And let's see, for the PPO plan, the new deductibles are, oh, thank you, Tana. Oh, yes. Okay. For the new plan, for the PPO plan, it's five-hundred dollars for employee only, and that's an upfront cost. It's different than the consumer-driven plan. Consumer-driven plan, the city pays money upfront and doesn't, you don't pay until you've exhausted that initial health reimbursement account dollar amount. On the PPO plan, it's a very typical, traditional PPO plan. You have a deductible. It's either five-hundred dollars or a thousand dollars if you're employee plus one or family.
Thank you very much.
If I may add one thing, Mayor Goodman, keep in mind that while that five-hundred might sound a little steep, office visit co-pays and prescription drugs are co-pays. The deductible does not have to be met for those items. For the large percentage of your population that's just having a couple of office visits, a couple of prescriptions a year, they do not have to meet that deductible. So the PPO is still very much a rich plan, and the deductible applies in more major services.
Thank you very much. Councilpeople, any questions?
Just a comment, Your Honor. Just a comment. It's more than insurance here in this case. It's, both these plans have a, in essence, remember, your employee doesn't pay anything in the beginning. So it helps as an incentive toward maintaining health care, good care, and hopefully nipping in the bud something that might become much worse later. Then becomes, then there's a deductible. And then we go into a co-pay.
I think on the PPO, they have to pay a thousand upfront.
Well, I'm sorry.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm kind of curious, though, why the premium's so much higher on the PPO than it is on the consumer-driven plan, the premium sheet I see, which of course is the city's absorbing on the employees. Why is it so much higher? Although the new plan is slightly, six dollars lower for us.
We have changed the benefit plan. The original, the PPO plan we currently have is priced because of its richness. So it literally came in at higher than the consumer-driven plan. Once again, the, you know, the insurance company makes a determination on what the premium costs are based on experience. And for the self-insured plan, we have an actuary who goes in and looks at our claims experience from the past and says, if you have the same number of employees, and last year you spent five thousand dollars, this year we have to have enough premium to be able to guarantee covering that five thousand dollars plus one percent more or two percent more or whatever. Once again, the claims are the claims are the claims, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Is there a motion, please?
Motion to approve item 22.
There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Let's move on to item number 23, for possible action to approve the contract with Chardis for stop-loss, six-hundred-and-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars self-insurance internal service fund from Human Resources. The consumer-driven health plan, CDHP, is a partially self-funded plan. Stop-loss insurance is obtained to limit the exposure on a claim's perspective. The city's incumbent stop-loss carrier, Sun Life, issued a final renewal offer of nineteen percent increase over current rates based on historical experience, expected final experience for this year and risk for the upcoming policy year. However, the stop-loss market can be competitive, and stop-loss carrier Chardis offered rates at nine percent over current rates. No other, no other A-rated stop-loss carriers offered competitive bids. We are recommending that Chardis be the new non-stop loss carrier, new non, new non, new stop loss carrier for our self-funded CDHP. Approval to contract with Chardis for stop-loss insurance service effective January 1, 2012. Memo from Lockton Benefits Consultant Representing the City of Las Vegas, dated October 20, 2011, recommended Chardis as the provider for stop-loss insurance services. Any comments?
Just briefly on shopping stop-loss insurance. There are eight to ten A-rated reinsurers out there. We go to every one of them every year. Stop-loss is a bit of a commodity. As long as the carrier's well-rated, you want to find the best price. In Chardis, which is A-rated, and is, Vicky can tell you, several other local and national companies that use this firm, they came in saving the city's fifty thousand dollars a year in premium. The next competitor up was two-hundred thousand more to four-hundred thousand more per year. So this was a clear indication to us, and we shop a lot of stop-loss and a lot of self-funded plans. This was a great deal and significantly less than the incumbent carrier.
Stop-loss is, if you think in terms of buying car insurance for your car, and you have a five-hundred-dollar deductible on your car, that means that anything that happens to your car between a dollar and five-hundred dollars, you pay yourself. And then you have an insurance carrier that comes in and says, if you have more than five-hundred dollars worth of damage, I will pay you everything up over the five-hundred dollars. So our self-insured health plan means that when you're on our CDH plan and you go to the doctors and it costs a hundred dollars, the city literally has someone who pays that hundred dollars to that doctor's office. And as long as your claim stays under two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in a year, the city just pays it. If you have a, you need to have a liver transplant, a kidney transplant, you end up in the urgent care or the ER, and you're going to be in the hospital for a long time, you may go over that two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. That's when that insurance kicks in. This is the company that is bidding on that insurance. And as Tana said, it was significantly lower than anyone else out there. It was the lowest bidder. And as long as they're financially stable, we just shop on price. And I asked Tana to research who else used Chardis. And City of Henderson, City of Sparks for their stop-loss. City of Henderson, City of Sparks, Nye County School District, MGM, Microsoft, apparently Oprah Winfrey because Harpo does it as well. So it's a reputable company. It will be here to pay the claims this year. It's an A-rated company with A in best, so we're confident there.
And how old a company is it?
I'm sorry?
What year was that company founded, please?
It's actually a spin-off from AIG. AIG took their stop-loss company and made Chardis out of it in about 2008. But it's been around, they, the individuals have been around for ninety years.
Thank, oh, missed her face, centered her face. Must have known about it. Mr. Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I met with Vicky. I inquired about Chardis because it's really an unfamiliar name to me. So she provided to me that it had been a spin-off from AIG just two years ago. One of the things that got AIG in trouble was their purchasing of business in essence, going for low price, even though they knew that they would lose money. They hoped to be able to make it up by keeping renewals. And that's something we have to watch out for because you never know when the market is going to change on you. And Sun Life probably priced their renewal at twenty percent increase correctly because we had some catastrophic claims. I don't know what their total loss percentage was, Vicky, Sun Life's at least over the life of their incumbency here, but watch out for Chardis because it's an AIG culture. And you've got to watch out because they maybe have bid, what, nine percent over the current premium, but the incumbent carrier knew our case better than anybody.
Well, and Councilman Coffin, if I may speak to that, the business industry indicated that AIG spun Chardis off because it was a profitable entity, and they wanted to leave, take the AIG name away from it, if you will, a few years ago. And the loss that Sun Life took, the loss reserves for the last three years are distributed to the entire market with extensive detail so they can price it. The thinking on Sun Life's renewal is that they had lost money in the prior two years, and they wanted to break even this year. So and again, in a commodity-type market, this was the perfect time to say, well, you don't get to charge an extra fifty next year just to make up for prior years. That's why we moved stop-loss.
Well, I think they're, I think they're strong enough to go with them. I'm just saying, watch out.
Sure.
Because we'll be making a change next year.
Maybe.
We will go with price. Unlike workers' compensation, where if we have a claim now, that claim can be with us for the next thirty years. So you want to know for certain that the carrier is going to be here thirty years from now when you, when he hits your million-dollar stop-loss. It has to hit the stop-loss this year. So as long as they're A-rated this year and able to pay their bills this year, that's all really, we really care about. Next year, it could be them, it could be whoever else comes in and gives us the best price.
I think Vicky's right on that, Your Honor. I would move for approval unless there's other questions.
Thank you. Any other comments from councilpeople?
Just real quickly, Mayor Goodman, I think the most important thing here is that we're providing the best product to our employees for the best price, of course. And I'm convinced, after listening to you two ladies, who are extremely knowledgeable, you're city employees, right?
I am.
You are.
I know.
So you care about your colleagues and the committee itself, which meets, they're city employees, right?
Yes.
So we've got very, very good people that care about our employees, that put in the work and the time to make sure we're getting the best product for a reasonable price, and I'm convinced we are.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, there's a motion by Councilman Coffin. Please vote. Please post. Motion approved. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item 44, administrative presentation and update on the implementation of the Development Services Process, DSP, all wards and Mr. Adams. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Scott Adams. I'm the Chief Urban Redevelopment Officer. And what I'm prepared to do this morning is give you a very brief overview of all the efforts that have been going on in the Development Services Process to date. I think in the interest of time, if I can go through this, there's a lot of content. I realize that I might have put a little too much content in here. I'll get through it, and then if you have any questions, I can either answer it, or I may have one of the team members who are present in the chambers today answer if you have a very specific question.
I just want to say, this is so exciting. I'm so thrilled. For six months, when I was walking door-to-door, this was such a concern that everybody had to go to a million different places and back and forth. This is so exciting. Thank you.
Well, I won't belabor the overview here. We're going to, I'm just going to talk a little bit about the backgrounds, our strategic management plan, some of the low-hanging fruit we've addressed. We've done some comparisons to other cities, what we've currently accomplished, what our priorities are, and then a little bit about our DSC reorganization. Background, you know, to improve the DSC process might have been very difficult five or six years ago. We were blowing and going. There was a lot going on, and it might have been very difficult at that time to carve out the proactive time we needed to really spend the time on improving our processes. So with the slowdown of the real estate economy, it gives us the time to do that. With that premise, we commissioned a team led by Bill Kirchhoff to do an analysis of our processes in 2009. That analysis led to ninety-five findings that addressed a whole range of issues in the process, but they really could be grouped in three areas. Our processing times, our customer service culture, and the fact that we tend to do consecutive review, and I'll touch on that a little bit later. When we started this, and Betsy had me take this over in January, we were looking at the individual issues. And when I took it over, I said, when there's ninety-five findings, we really need to take a more strategic approach to it. And that's what we've done. We really put all the staff together, managers and line staff. We did a lot of whiteboarding, and we've taken a more of a structural approach to improve our process by forming a strategic management plan. And what that says is, how do we build the right and optimal development services process rather than reacting to the ninety-five findings that were in the Kirchhoff study? So we've got five elements to that plan. A management element, a technology element, a communications element, a process element, and a facility element. What I'd like to do is I'd like to ask in the audience here, all of the team members who are present to stand up. And I'm doing this for a reason, because we have both management and line staff involved in this effort. Some of those folks you recognize because they're the department directors, they're managers in each of the functions in the DSC. But you may not recognize some of those folks because there are some of our line staff who work day-to-day, and they've been engaged in this process as well in helping identify what some of the key issues are in the process. Thank you.
And we thank you very much. I mean, we know the hard work that's gone into this. You are the best, which is why the city works so well. Thank you each.
The, and as I said, each of those elements, we've had a multi-disciplinary team working on priorities, and the, you know, and every department that's been in the Development Services Process, as well as some of our central services functions, have been engaged in each of these teams to look at each component. Some of the low-hanging fruit that we've addressed, we've looked at wayfinding systems. We're really encouraging our folks to look, put yourself in the customer's shoes as you get in the parking lot, walk in the building, and engage in our processes. So we're looking at wayfinding, signage, and a help desk. You know, we started calling that a triage desk, and the theory there is, as you walk into a center, we should, you should, it's the same philosophy as at the DMV. When you go in, you don't want to wait for an hour and a half, God forbid you have to wait for an hour and a half, to find out you don't, you're missing something. So the idea is to catch folks right up front, find out what they need, and whether they've got everything they need to do business with the city at that point. Other things we've been doing is we now have the entire process out on our SharePoint site, which is an internal site, so we can communicate across all those departments about issues. And we have a rapid resolution team. We have a group from, consists of members from each department, looking at critical issues. When a client comes in, there's a thorny problem that we really never encountered before, we want to solve it. They come together, solve that problem, and then we memorialize it so if it comes up again, we know how to deal with it. We have an operations committee, and we're forming a new management unit there. When we were in the old DSC, we had four or five departments in that DSC, and they were all kind of doing their own thing. But there wasn't a single group managing the facility or the process in the facility. So we now have sort of a mini Board of Directors composed of the directors and managers of each of the departments that meet every month to discuss process improvements and facility change. So that if signage issues come up or customer service issues come up, they talk about how to work together to make and solve those changes. Sort of, as I said, like a little Board of Directors for the DSC. We've been doing a situation assessment. I think one of the things that's been very important is to understand where we stand in relation to our peers and better understand our own processes. So one of the things that's been done, and Robert Summerfield's been leading this effort with our process team, is a comparison city survey. And I'll go over that in a minute. So we can see where we stand in relation to other cities that we think we compete with around the United States. Because as we know, we're in a down economy, and it's a very competitive environment for businesses, for real estate development, and all the things that we're trying to attract into our city. And of course, the other low-hanging fruit was back in January, we executed, we moved into a new DSC building, but then we've executed reorganization and And actually, I'll say that over this weekend, we will have every department that's part of that process in a single location in that building. Touching quickly on the comparison city survey, our process team looked at, surveyed 68 cities in the Southwest and fast-growing metro areas nationwide. Where we're really looking at, where are the other Las Vagases out there and how well are they doing and how do we stack up against them? That's really what we asked. Because we really, we're really trying to benchmark where we should be as a city to help us develop our own process goal times for how we're going to get our clients out of the process. And this slide has a lot of information on it. I'm not going to delve into it in depth. You have a copy of this. There's some key things, though. Where we're red, we're slower than the average. Where we're green, we're better than average. And we know in those red areas, we've got to work on it. We've got to, we'd like to work on the green areas, too, because quite frankly, as we look at comparisons, we want to be the fastest. But at the same time, we do not want to sacrifice health, safety, and welfare.
Could I ask a question, please? Were these figures from last fiscal year or have you started measuring since you have got everybody together?
We did this over the summer, this summer through the early fall. We did this over a several-month period, the survey, and we asked, it basically is the worst-case time that it takes to get through those cities in our process. You know, in some cases, you'll hear that we've, we get somebody out of our center in a week because they're ready, they've got everything ready to go, and they're only doing certain things. This represents, if you took how long it would take to do everything and lay it all end to end, that's how long it takes. That's how long it takes in these other cities and how long it takes for us. I think I'd like to point out that some of this is entitlement. If you look at our entitlements there, our entitlement process is relatively fixed. That's the time it takes to go through the council. Then there's another piece there that studies permits and civils. That's the administrative piece of going through, once you've been entitled, you go through a process of review and then you get your permit. And there's another step, which is, once you're under construction, you go through inspections and validation that you've met code and done all those kinds of things. So, we're going to look at all that. We're going to look at what, how much of this is statutory, how much of this is ordinance, and how much of this is on our backs. And we'll hopefully, as we go along, feed some of that information back to you so you'll have a better understanding of how the process works.
Mayor?
Question, yes, Councilman Ross.
Not a question, but I wanted to share with you the charge that I gave him yesterday when I saw a little bit of this report, is that how long is it going to take us to be the fastest in the country and the best in the country of how we do business? And I want to reserve comments when he's done with his report on just that. So, I just want to make that statement.
Will hold.
Okay.
Thanks.
I point out that upper-right-hand pie chart, there's only 3% of the municipalities we surveyed that do not have time service goals. That's what, why we're doing this is so we better understand our process and arrive at clear time service goals for each of our steps. And there's three big key ones that we surveyed. It's a big commercial project that tends to be where you hear most from. The big commercial projects where they get their toes stubbed along the way. There's residential projects, and then there's tenant improvements where somebody's finishing out leasable space and they have to go through a process to finish that leased space. Some of the priorities going forward, as I said, we're going to set time service goals. We're in that process now. I will tell you, we've, and a couple of weeks ago, you approved a contract with a firm to act as a process engineer. I would like to introduce Rick Vermonti. Rick's back here. Rick is a person whose job is to look at all of our processes, look at the new technologies we're developing, and bridge the two. Because it's not just a matter of, let's put everything online. We've got to look hard at our processes. And then how do we take that process and use technology to bring it online and make it better? And Rick's engaged with us as our consultant to help us with that. He's worked extensively in both the public and private sectors in process engineering improvements. So, as we go forward, some of our priorities, we've made business licensing a very high priority. There's a number of things we're doing that are fairly self-explanatory there. You know, I think one of the things that we hope to have is in the next few weeks, the ability to pay, apply and pay online through business licensing. Another big one here is electronic plan submission and review. And we're evaluating some software right now that would allow us to, out-of-the-box software, hopefully get that going fairly soon, that would allow all the departments to review plans simultaneously. And I've got a graphic that shows what I mean there. We're looking at digital service delivery kiosks. We may replace the help desk with technology where we look at integrating kiosks with virtual receptionists so that customers come in and self-help and find out what they need to do and where they can get it through technology. We'll continue to do longer-term, you know, some of these things we're going to do right away. The two biggies are business licensing. We're going to, as we do these short-term improvements, we'll be putting a much bigger Hanson system in place that will have a business licensing focus initially, but then we'll go back and start to look at all the other pieces of the process to make sure they're as part of that. Eventually, our goal is to have all of our applications, licenses, and permits available online for application, payment, and tracking. So, you'll be able to know where you stand on anything that you interface within this center.
But always backed up by a personal appearance. You can get everything done as well.
That's right.
You don't have to.
That's right. You know, there's some people that like to use human interaction, there's some people that don't ever want to come down and see us, and we want to be able to service that wide range of interest. This is what I meant by, and this is what Project Docs or our new software for electronic plans review does. Right now, if you look at the bottom, we're doing consecutive reviews. In fact, this is one of the biggest findings in the Kirchhoff study is, we tend to, when a person comes in, submits plans, we go from department to department to department. One department reviews it, goes to the next department, goes to the next department. And that's being very kind of gross about it. Some of it's a little more simultaneous than that, but that tends to be the way it is. What we're trying to do is turn that process sideways and make it simultaneous, as it shows there in the proposed graph. So, that everybody's looking at it at the same time. And as you can see, conceptually, the time would be shortened dramatically in how long it takes to get through the process. And that's what electronic plans review will do for us if we can get that system in place fairly quickly. And what we may have to do is there, it's a, it's a software that is mimicking national best practices. We may adapt our procedures to the technology. And so, there's going to be some give and take as we start to bring some of this kind of system online. And now, I'll just kind of walk through each department, and if you have any detailed questions, we can ask those at the end of each of the departments. I'm just going to hit some of the highlights here in the interest of time. The planning department has done a great job. They've, I think the top two points here are showing that in dialogue with you, we've identified things that we can handle administratively or a planning commission action versus having to go all the way through the entire council process. Now, that means that instead of taking 45 to 60 days at council, things can be done administratively or stop at planning commission. That saves a lot of time, and for very large projects, time is money. If you're sitting there with a large construction loan, interest ticking away, it can be very expensive to go through a lengthy entitlement process if you didn't know about it on the front end. And so, we're doing more administratively helps. The other thing that I would applaud the planning department for is that 90% of their front-counter customers are served within 10 minutes and all phone calls returned within 24 hours. That is great customer service. As I mentioned, there's a couple of web applications that are in process right now, and hopefully sometime in November, we'll have those available so that persons can apply, close, and pay for their business licenses online. Building and Safety are all doing a lot of the same things. I think across the board, our personnel are using more technology personally. We have a lot of mobile field solutions where persons are entering data from the field real-time into the system, and they have handhelds that allow them to do that. Their first review times in Building and Safety have collapsed in half from 20 days to 10 days. So, we're getting the comments back to our customers faster. And then we're using a lot of counter reviews now. What they're doing is separating flow, they're looking at some of the simpler things, they've set counter procedures up out front that allow a lot of our customers to go to the counter and get their permit right there on the spot and out, not have to go through any lengthy process at all. The fire department has done this, a lot of the same things. Again, they're using electronic solutions for a lot of their work. I think important thing to note here is that 38% of their plans reviewers are now coming out of expedited permit procedure processes. And then I think another point is they're going to be looking at putting a quality-first staff member in place to assist customers to complete their submissions on the first attempt. And that's part of what we're having to do is help the customer help themselves. A lot of customers, a lot of the process issues are on their side of the counter. And if we can do a better job of explaining how it works and getting them right the first time, we save them a lot of time in the processing of how they work through our various systems. Public Works has done a lot of the same things as well. I think the key one to note here is the reduced civil review time. The civil review, civil plans are one of the key planned components of especially larger projects. And the civil review plan, anytime we can collapse that review time down, it's one of the major reviews that really saves time in the overall process to a client. And that is a huge improvement. And then finally, the DSC and reorganization itself has made a big improvement. If you just think about it, we were kind of, we had a real small, if you had been to the old DSC, it was a small, dark, difficult-to-find-your-way-around building. We're now in a much bigger building with a great ground floor for customer service. It's orderly in terms of where all departments are in the building so the customers understand it better. And now, in the reorganization, we went from six departments, primary departments, to three that are the primary departments in the process. Our civil plans reviews and code enforcement went from Public Works and Neighborhood Services into Building and Safety, and licensing went from Finance into Planning. So, all the key components that are part of the process are now in three departments and they're all in a single building. And that alone has made a huge change to the perception of customers in terms of where they go and understanding our process. And then finally, I'll leave you with this. This is just for you and the public to understand that where everything is in the building in the new DSC, the first floor is where all of our counter services are, and then as you go up the building, you hit, most of the customer interface functions are in the lower floors of the building for convenience, Building and Safety and Planning on the second and third floor. After this weekend, business licensing will be on the sixth floor of the building, and then we get up to administrative functions in the upper floor that have less customer interface. So, with that, that gives that quick overview. If you have any questions, I am not the process expert. You may require some of our experts out in the audience to answer that question.
Thank you. Councilman Ross.
Thank you. I have any questions? I have some statements. After I received this briefing yesterday, Mayor, close to this entire briefing, the word I used was hallelujah. And I'll tell you why. This is the gospel I've been speaking for the past couple of years, and Betsy, you know that. We have got to make it easy, simple, for people to do business with the city. All of these things you just talked about, I'm very excited about because you're doing it. And the things we've talked many years, and Mayor, certainly you and I in the past campaign, this is, this is it. If we're going to strengthen, if we're going to diversify this economy as a city, if we're going to do everything we can to help businesses grow and create jobs, this is it. That DSC is the epicenter of activity. I like to say it's City Hall, but it's really not. The machine is the DSC. That's where things are going to happen. That's where this economy is going to change for us in the city of Las Vegas. I have to say this, Betsy, I said it to you yesterday and your executive team, I want to say it to the rest of you that are involved with this. Thank you very much for getting us this far. I think we're not done, though, and I think you recognize that, too, as we're trying to merge all these things together. I say we're not done because as I'm talking to developers, as I'm talking to business people, it's that culture, too. We have to be that customer-friendly, customer-oriented, service-driven city. That's what we've got to be. I don't want to say we have to run government like a business, but we can treat our customers with respect and courtesy and bend over backwards and go the extra mile. And Scott, when your team and all of you, when you're all doing that, it makes a huge difference. Because people talk to other people and word spreads, and then all of a sudden, everybody wants to come to Las Vegas to do business. And that's what we need. So, I want to say kudos to all of you. Thank you very much for your efforts. I think we've got a great team on this, Mayor and council members, and I'm excited to see what else you bring to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, and Mayor Pro Temp.
Thank you, Mayor. I mean, I need to echo what Councilman Ross said. This is a great leap forward and we have more work to do, but you know what, when anybody's going to open up a brand-new business and they need to deal with the city, just like the city of Las Vegas, it's going to be pretty daunting for them the first time. They don't know what to do, they don't know where to go. And last night, the mayor and I were in Sun City Summerlin for a town hall meeting, and Betsy was there, and a gentleman came up and said, you know, I want to open up a small business. I don't need an S U P or a variance, or I just want to open up a small, I think he said it was a vitamin store. So, so, tell everybody today what they need to do to do something like that so they can listen to you. And if this gentleman is watching, what exactly do they need to do to open up a small business in the city of Las Vegas in just kind of a nutshell? Especially since you're making it so much easier today.
Okay. Well, I certainly, after this weekend, it's going to be much easier because as you go into the Development Services Center, one of the first things you have to do is take out a business license. And fortunately, the business licensing function will now be with everything else that's involved in all facets of getting into business. The other, I mean, I think the other thing that's important about that is, and I would have a lot of questions on that, but the typical person would typically have space identified, they would be going into their leased space or buying a building, they would need to develop plans for that space in terms of what improvements they're going to make to that building. And then, so they would come in, pull a business license, and then talk to, go to our help desk, they would be provided direction to the appropriate counter to get the initial guidance they need to start the process of how to develop those plans and what plan reviews will be necessary in order to achieve all the clearances and approvals they need to get themselves into business. But the point of having everything in one single location is, instead of having to go to the DSC, to City Hall, and all these different places, you can now go to one location into this center and get all those answers in one place.
And Mayor, typically, how long is that going to take?
You know, that's probably the hardest part of it. It's hard to say because it really depends on how big they are. If they're, and I'll just use it to extreme on a Zappos, it could be a very lengthy process because they're very large buildings and a very big complex. But if they're a small one, and I hate to throw this out there, but we had one of the recent bars that opened up downtown, because they were ready, they had all their plans in place, they were permitted in one week. So, it just depends. Now, that doesn't include the business license, that was all the permit reviews. It really depends on how ready they are as a customer in terms of having those plans ready, and we will certainly work real hard. I'll say this, I would have to echo, every one of our departments is now working very hard to work together and to work to get our customers out as quickly as possible. And we will certainly make a valiant effort to make them a satisfied, happy customer.
Thank you. I have a question and a quick comment. Are your budgeted items, do they include all the programming and software that you referenced? Is that in next year, in this fiscal year's budget, or is it to be proposed for the next year?
Most of what we're doing that are on our short-term priority list is already budgeted for, in the current year budget.
And the other comment, is a comment, comment, is we need to market everything that you're doing. It has been such a process for people to go through, and they need to know it's It has been such a process for people to go through, and they need to know it's changed. This has happened since the summer, and it's going to be great and easier, and we are the most friendly city there is. So, we need to market that. So, Ms. Fretwell, we need money from your budget for marketing what they're doing.
Well, some of that, some of that may not take a lot of money. I mean, that's why we have a communications team. We not only have to communicate to our customer, but we have to communicate internally across all of our employees. So, their mission is to develop that communications plan both internally and externally.
Well, I can assure you, your council people and your mayor are absolutely going to be out there broadcasting how swift, efficient we are now. So, thank you very much, Mr. Adams. Anybody, any question? Yes, not so fast. Councilwoman Tarkanian, sorry.
I just wanted to make a few comments. You have done a tremendous job in that. I often heard complaints about how long it took and how difficult it was in this city, and then, they would compare us to somebody else. And I was fortunate enough, or maybe not so fortunate in a way, that in this remodeling I've been doing, I did go through the process. I did go to the first floor. I did see all of the courtesy that you show, and I was with people who have done it many times in the past, construction people, and they just were full of praise for how quickly it was done and full of praise at how much help they were getting. And I wanted to let you know that. I thought that was, that's where the answers come, right from the very people who are doing it. So, you have worked hard, it's been a great job. The only thing I ask is that on the planning committee, on these final actions, I just prefer knowing before the final action is made on something because I believe very strongly vibrancy in business, help as much as we can, but keep a decent balance with individual rights also. And you've been really great. I don't think we've really held up anything, but it's been good that it's come to us and that we can make sure it fits in with what we know the community wants.
Councilman Wilson.
Mayor Goodman, thank you so much. I like that word swift, I think swift justice. I think we should do whatever we can for, sorry, just a little plug, just a little plug.
Oh, my gosh.
It's about 12 years ago, and I've told this story a few times, I started an effort to build an office building downtown. And somebody gave me the advice that make sure you hire a contractor and an architect that have experience with the city of Las Vegas. And their message was, because if people don't have experience, it can be a rough and time-consuming process. I got lucky. I hired a great contractor, great architect. My experience in building my office building was very smooth, very efficient. But that was the reputation, you know, 12 years ago, that it's tough to do business in the city. And not to belabor the point and be too redundant, but that's what this process is doing. Like the mayor says, it's putting us on the map to be the best city in the country to do business in. So, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Great job to everybody in your entire organization.
Well, I would have to echo, I would like to just state again for the record, we have great leadership in every department and great employees down to everybody that's working the front line in it, and they are all collectively working to make it better.
And from our knowledge, they're all patient and they're just wonderful people. Thank you.
Mayor.
Yes, please.
May I just mention something to your point about marketing? This is something that's in David and Diana and Jace's plan. That's why we've been having press conferences and a variety of other opportunities for people to experience the DSC. That's why we have things like this on the agenda. And you'll see in your inbox, a new newsletter regarding the Development Services Center that would, you know, be available for folks who are interested in our processes to be able to keep up to date on what's changed, who's changed, and why. So, I think we're really trying to do the best we can on our little miniscule budget on these things to take advantage of all the resources we have available to get the word out.
Thank you. And that's on the social media, the website from the city, correct?
I believe that's on there. I'm not sure where. Do you know where it is, Diana or Jace?
Yeah, it's on the Facebook pages as well and the city's website.
Okay, it's all there. We're assured by those. I'm sorry, not public comment at this time.
Are we going to have an open house on that?
We are going, we are scheduled, please, Mr. Raki or Ms. Paul? When are we going over there? We are. The 14th of November?
Yes.
At what time, please? 11:00 a.m. on the 14th.
11:00.
11:00. Thank you. Goodness, there are holes in this wall. Gosh, I'd hate to be his child. Gosh. Okay, so, thank you, and there's no, there is no motion for this item. We'll move on to item 45, please. Discussion for possible action regarding an option disposition and development agreement between Loritz Properties, Inc. and the city of Las Vegas for the development of a neighborhood shopping center consisting of a Dollar General grocery market and two retail pad sites of a compatible use on approximately 4.94 acres of vacant commercial land located within the city-owned Business Park, commonly known as the Las Vegas Enterprise Park, generally located at the southwest corner of West Lake Mead and North Martin Luther King Boulevard. This is in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Oh, good morning.
Good morning, Mayor.
Ms. Tarkanian.
Thank you, Mayor. For the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. With me this morning is Hank Gordon, Chairman of Loritz Properties. In introducing the item, I want to thank Mr. Gordon for his persistence. Retail projects are very competitive, very tough, and he's been very diligent in working through this project to make sure that it happens. This item before you today is the second step for our transaction in Enterprise Park for this project. The first step you heard back in May of this year, where you considered an exclusive negotiation agreement to give Mr. Gordon the ability to go out and find retail tenants for this site. The site is in Enterprise Park. The map is on the overhead. I don't know how clear it is on the screen, but it also is part of the backup documentation, which is available on the city clerk's website for the agenda item. You can see on the map, and I'll orient you here, to the top of the map is Lake Mead Boulevard. And then, to the right of the map, which is to the east, is Martin Luther King Boulevard. And then, to the left of the site, or to the west of the site, is the FBI headquarters building. And so, this is really the northeastern corner of Enterprise Park. And there's about a 10-acre piece of land that has been undeveloped for some time between the McDonald's restaurant on the corner and the FBI building. This project proposes to develop about half of that for a new retail project. There are three pads within that project. The first is a pad for a new grocery market, Dollar General Grocery, and that is on the pad to the, to the west of the site. And then, there are two additional pads marked on the site map as Parcel A and Parcel B, and those are two future retail pads to be developed over time. The E and A that you approved back in May set a purchase price for the land of $5.50 per square foot. That's roughly $240,000 per acre. And the developer has maintained that purchase price for the development agreement. It's worth to note that the purchase price actually came over to recent appraisals that we have. But to Mr. Gordon's credit, he's maintaining that purchase price that he committed to us back in May. The next steps for the project are, the development agreement sets out some key dates. I'm just going to mention those quickly. The developer has until March of next year for feasibility and due diligence, and that's important to make sure that they can go through the site planning work. I also should mention that we're holding a, I should say, that Councilman Barlow is holding a community meeting tonight. We're going to introduce the project to the community, but we're going to have a follow-up community meeting with the community, with the store, to explain exactly what's going to take place sometime between now and next March. There's a purchase date for the developer of June of next year, and then, six months after that purchase date, the developer has to start. And then, 12 months after the construction start date, the developer has to finish construction. So, we're looking for an ultimate deadline. We're looking at mid-year of 2013, although I know that Mr. Gordon is anxious to get going. He's spent a lot of time, money, and effort in studying the site, working with retailers, and he wants to get going much sooner. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gordon, who'll say a few remarks about the concept of the store and his interest in developing on the site. Mr. Gordon?
Well, first of all, I have a correction to make. When the pastor was up earlier and gave his invocation, he blessed the city councilmen and women, but he forgot the mayor. So, God bless him, Mayor.
Oh, oh, my.
Now, to business.
There's a brownie point from me.
For those of you who were not on the council a few years-
Oh, you have to state your name, though, now.
Oh, sorry. Hank Gordon, 1770 North Buffalo Drive, Las Vegas, 89128.
Thank you.
For those of you who were not on the council a few years back, the city granted me a DDA to work on and produce what we thought we had at the time, an 80,000-square-foot Food for Less grocery market on the site. And everybody at Food for Less approved it, and just about the time it went to the Kroger Real Estate Committee, who is the parent company of Food for Less, for final approval, the recession hit and they pulled this and a lot of other projects. I don't think that Food for Less has built a new store in their western territory, California, Las Vegas, since that time. So, along came Dollar General, which is a New York Stock Exchange company, has 9,000 stores in the United States, wanting to expand into the Las Vegas area. And we met with them. They actually went into two of our closed Rite Aid stores and remodeled those. But this will be the first ground, built up from ground store for them, meaning we're building for their specifications as opposed to a remodel, remodel of existing building. And I think it's a grand opportunity. They're, they've been in business a long time, and they're very competitive in their pricing. They are a general merchandise store, not just a grocery market, although the groceries are their main theme. So, you can buy, think of it as a mini Costco, I guess, or a mini Walmart. They do carry general merchandise in addition to groceries. We're kind of excited about having the opportunity to build for them. Their credit is very good, which means we'll get the rent for the next 20 years. And an opportunity to finally put something on this property that I've wanted to do for quite a while. And we do have a fully executed lease this time with Dollar General, and we submitted a copy of the signature page and the front page of the lease to the Business Development Department of the city. So, we're really ready to go if the city grants us the entitlements.
Thank you very much. Councilmen, women, please.
I do, Mayor. By me. Mr. Gordon, I want to take a moment and say thank you for what you've done in this community and in this city. Yes, you're a businessman, yes, you're a developer, but you're also a community partner. Several of your centers are located in my ward. And you are just, everything that you guys do, you commit to, I'm just grateful that you're part of this community. And what you've done, and even though you're running a business and a company, your long-term vision, people are working. And this lease is just another example of something bright coming out of this economy. You recently took down, several months ago, some acreage out in the northwest for future plans. And I think that's phenomenal in this economy today. And you're still moving forward one click at a time. So, I just want to say thank you for what you're doing in the city of Las Vegas.
You are welcome. We, to enlarge on that statement a little bit, we've gone out over the last two years because we didn't have any new retailers to build for. Digression, our company just builds commercial retail. We don't build offices, industrial apartments. All we do is retail. And recognizing that most of the national retailers have no capital budgets for expansion, let alone trying to overcome the image of the economy here in Las Vegas, it's been an uphill battle to bring new retailers to Las Vegas. So, over the last two years, we've been buying properties that were foreclosed on, that is, vacant land. It was foreclosed on by banks or the FDIC, recognizing that one of these days, Las Vegas is going to come back, and we believe in Las Vegas, and we put our money where our mouth is. And we've bought eight properties in the Las Vegas area that hopefully, in the next few years, we will have the opportunity to develop. And we've got 51 properties right here in the Las Vegas area that are all retail. Fortunately, we're very lucky to have very little vacancy in those. In most cases, they are, in all cases, they are anchored with a major anchor, such as an Albertson's, or Kmart, or Walmart, and so forth. So, they're pretty healthy shopping centers. And we look forward to a continuing relationship in this area.
I would add to that because I know that during the campaign, I came to you and I said, please build downtown in the center of the city. We need more, we need a grocery store or a market downtown. And I know that something that will be on your radar, there are other cities that are not as healthy as this one. And you are at the right time, at the right place. We are going to take the lid off of everything. So, please keep looking at downtown as well, and we are thrilled that you are doing this. And so, I thank you and your family for all the time, energy, effort you've put into development in our city.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion on this, please? Councilwoman Tarkanian is so moved to approve. Is a motion, please vote, please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. And Mr. Arnt, as you go tonight, please make sure that you tell the meeting group tonight in the West Side School that we are very enthusiastic about this. I was planning on attending, but unfortunately, I have an oversight appointment that I missed. So, I will not be there. I don't know if any of our other council persons will be there, but I know with Ms. Councilman Barlow, with the new baby, maybe he will come by, though. So, thank you.
I will do so.
Baby, baby?
Baby, maybe.
Baby, maybe. You're funny. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Arnt. Moving on to item number 46, discussion for possible action regarding a second amendment to the third amended and restated agreement to design, construct, and lease a performing arts center by and among the Smith Center for Performing Arts and Nevada Nonprofit Corporation, City Parkway 5, Inc., a Nevada nonprofit corporation in the city of Las Vegas, Nevada, a political subdivision of the state in Nevada, par parcel H slash I, or is that one?
H slash I, that's correct.
Thank you. Located at 360 Promenade Place in Symphony Park. This is in Councilman Barlow's Ward 5. Mr. Arnt.
Thank you, Mayor. With me this morning should be a familiar face, Myron Martin with the Smith Center for the Performing Arts. This is a procedural step to really share some good news. This amendment accomplishes two things. One is it gives the Smith Center the responsibility to manage the perimeter sidewalk around the campus, so it accomplishes that. But the second thing, and moving on to the good news, is that it's distributing some of an outside contingency fund that we appropriated for the project, the reason being that the project is coming in on schedule and on budget. So, I wanted to just list the distributions that are taking place for this item and then be glad to answer any questions. We budgeted an outside contingency on top of the construction cost of $245,980,000. We budgeted a $13.1 million outside or an external contingency, meaning the city and the Smith Center as proponents and the owners of the project are funding that and controlling that money, not giving it to the contractor, Waring Turner. So, we're in control of that money. Because we're using that money, just a portion of it, we're going to be returning a portion of it back collectively to the city's redevelopment agency as well as the Smith Center, as follows. The intent is to distribute $1.5 million to the redevelopment agency. Again, this is a distribution back to the redevelopment agency of funds that we appropriated. The intent also is to distribute $1 million to the Smith Center. In addition, there is a $500,000 distribution to the Smith Center team for the garage project, which, as you know, is supporting not only the theaters, but is also supporting the Children's Museum, which is underway. And then, finally, an additional $500,000 to the Smith Center team for F F and E, furnitures, fixtures, and equipment inside the Smith Center. So, again, we're coming in under budget, not going to be using that whole outside contingency, the 13- the 13.1 million. We're distributing a part of that now. We anticipate having some additional savings of that 13.1 that we're going to distribute at a later date. With me again is Myron Martin, and I invite him to make any comments or answer any questions.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Council, Myron Martin, 241 West Charleston. And this is good news. In this environment, to have put over 3,500 skilled workers to work, building a truly world-class project, and to come in on time and on budget, says an awful lot about this community. So this is good news, that we tucked away some money in case. We call it contingency. And the fact that we didn't need it means that the city and the Smith Center has done their collective job to build a truly world-class building on time and on budget. And we couldn't be more pleased with our relationship with the city. So thank you.
We're so excited. Could you just give your website, please, so that those who have not purchased tickets yet will know where to go and how to do it?
Thanks, Mayor. And of course, our Broadway series, which went on sale just about five weeks ago, has already exceeded our expectations. But the great news is now we're introducing all the other shows. Michael Feinstein is coming to town to do his Frank Sinatra performance, and many, many others. Lily Tomlin is coming to the Smith Center. So yes, please go to www.thesmithcenter.com, and you'll see the whole list of shows. Single tickets are going on sale in just about 10 days, so those who hadn't wanted to subscribe for a whole bunch of shows and just want to buy one or two, before you know it, just in 10 days or so, you can do just that.
And ticket-friendly to citizens of Nevada, correct?
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We set out to build an important building for those of us who live here. And I think all of you know that Broadway tickets, as an example, start as little as $24 per ticket. And that's because we wanted to make sure that we were as friendly as possible to our neighbors. So thank you. And Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd like to also say congratulations to the Barlow family for their new baby. I congratulate Ricky and their family.
We're very excited for the family. Thank you. Comments, yes, Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to make another comment about the town hall meeting we had at Sun City Summerlin last night. You had representatives there for the Smith Center. They had a booth set up with the literature, but what was even better is they were coming up with innovative ways to provide transportation to senior citizens up there, to get them down to the Smith Center, to make it easier for them to attend an event. So you're not just not providing tickets, you're really coming up with some great ways to make it easy for people to attend the events there. And that's why it's going to be a success, because you're being creative on what you're doing. So thank you very much for doing that.
Thank you, Councilman. Yeah, the Smith Center, we believe, is the living room for Las Vegas, so we want everyone to come hang out with us.
I love the living room. Is there a motion, please? Any comments, questions from council? Could we have a motion, please, since Councilman Barlow is not here? Motion made by Councilwoman Tarkanian to approve. Please vote, please post. Unanimous. Thank you so much for all that you do. This is so exciting. Here we come. Thank you. And Mr. Art, thank you so much. We will now move on to item number 47, Abeyance Item, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding a One-Year Review of a Temporary Tavern Limited License, Las Palmas Entertainment, Inc., DBA Azul Tequila Nightclub, 115 North Seventh. This is also in Councilman Barlow's ward. Please state your name.
Karen Duddleston, Business Licensing Manager. Under the temporary license issued to Azul Tequila for a Tavern Limited License at 115 North Seventh, the conditions required a one-year review before the city council. The council reviewed this item at their August 17th and their September 21st meetings. At the most recent meeting, this item was obeyed in order to allow the applicant of business licensing the opportunity to address questions concerning condition number three of their license, which required that business services be notified in writing within 48 hours of any incidents where Metro was called to respond. Azul Tequila President, Mr. Francisco Laura, is here today, and he has provided us with all of the requested documentation, and we have put this in your business licensing books today. So at this time, stock recommends that we issue the Tavern Limited License with the current conditions, one through three. Those conditions include, number one, the license is approved for the service of patrons over the age of 21. Two, any temporary events that would allow patrons under the age of 21 must be approved by business services. And three, the licensee is required to notify business services in writing within 48 hours of any incident where Metro is required to respond.
Thank you. Any comments you would wish to make?
No, so far. Everything is okay.
Thank you. Questions, comments from council? Is there a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilwoman. There's a motion on the floor. Please vote, please post. Motion carries. Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thrilled for you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Duddleston. Okay. The agenda item, Member Appointments to, excuse me, one second, to the Citizens Advisory, the Las Vegas Citizens Advisory Committee to the Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency. The Citizens Advisory Committee, CAC, is to act in an advisory capacity and to provide input to the Redevelopment Agency, the RDA, and the city on matters relating to the RDA's proposed projects and programs. Members must work or live in the RDA. Terms shall be for three years, with six members having initial staggered terms, and limited to two full consecutive three-year terms. The CAC will consist of nine members appointed by the city council. They will serve without compensation. Category A, Small Business Owner or Storefront Business Owner, Linda A. Zaraski, independence meant. Ms. Zaraski is president of a coin, medallion, and token manufacturing design firm in the Sahara South Ridge neighborhood. She is active with her neighborhood business association that is exploring ways to redevelop the area. Category B, Licensed Real Estate Professional, a real estate attorney or Realtor who is active in real estate transactions, financing, or analysis. Albert Z. Kovacs, Brownstein Hyatt Farber Shrek. Mr. Kovacs is a corporate attorney who believes that urban revitalization enriches the lives of residents, workers, and visitors. He feels a resurgent energy is waiting to be unlocked in some of our underappreciated neighborhoods. Category C, Development Business Community Member, and may include an architect, developer, or contractor, active in building or developing projects. Amy Fincham, Amy Fincham Consulting Services. Ms. Fincham not only operates or design consulting company from an office located in the RDA, but is also an active patron in the downtown community. She feels it's important that the city's core is a place of community, culture, connection, and creativity. Category D, Resident Homeowner or Primary Dweller of a Single Family Home, Lois Mack, Self-Employed Mediator. Ms. Mack is a retired educator who currently handles mediation for the Neighborhood Center, a Nevada foreclosure mediation program. She's been active in the community for 43 years. Category E, Apartment Renter or Condominium Owner, Sam Cherry, Cherry Development. Mr. Cherry is a pioneer in downtown condominium development. He created a high-rise lifestyle that was so enticing, he chose it for his own residence. Mr. Cherry continues to be involved in downtown development, as well as arts and cultural activities. Category F, Educator or Community Leader Working to Benefit Children, Dr. Beverly Mathis, Public Education Foundation. Dr. Mathis is retired from the CCSD, where she was a principal at Booker Elementary in Ward Five. She is now a member of the Public Education Foundation and advocates for the prime-six schools, which are predominantly located in west Las Vegas. Category G, Ward One, Community Member, Margarita Perez Unitis, One-Stop Motors. Ms. Perez Unitis is a customer service representative who also teaches music to children and adults. She wants to benefit future generations through her volunteer work and feels the RDA Citizens Advisory Committee is a way to accomplish that goal. Category H, Ward Three, Community Member, James Bonaventure, Culinary Workers Union. Ms. Bonaventure is the Director of Legal Affairs for the Culinary Workers Union. He has worked in a section of Ward Three since 1983. His office area is now part of the RDA. Ms. Bonaventure also resides in the greater downtown area. Category I, Ward Five, Community Member, Michael Cornthwaite Downtown Cocktail Room and the Beet Coffee Shop, excuse me, the Beef Coffee House. Mr. Cornthwaite has been a pioneer in development of the Fremont East Entertainment District, first with the Downtown Cocktail Room, then with Emergency Arts Creative Collective, which includes the Beet Coffee House and Records. And so, Mr. Art?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff does recommend approval. I think, you see, it's a very good cross-section of the various interests that we have within the redevelopment area. We do have, I know at least, two of the appointees with us this morning, Mr. Cornthwaite and Ms. Fincham. So I'd like to invite them to make a few remarks if they'd like to, and then if there are any other appointees attending that I missed as well, to invite them also up to the dais as well.
Please, will you come forward? And state your name, and then again, with which you're associated. Good morning.
Amy Fincham, Amy Fincham Consulting Services at 817 South Main Street. I opened up my own consulting company a year ago on Main Street there, and I have a passion for downtown and everything that's going on. Like you guys, I want to see downtown become this really thriving, wonderful place to both live and work. And every time I drive into work in the morning, I just get all this energy just seeing all the wonderful things happening. And I really do think it's an opportunity to really have that sense of community in Las Vegas. And so downtown's one of those passions, as well as getting involved in community garden service work over the last year with Tonopah Community Garden, and now taking on a research project to study how some of these spaces can become great places for connection and healing in our community, which is really neat, especially in this economic time. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cornthwaite?
Good morning, everyone. Michael Cornthwaite, downtown resident for the last 10 years, business owner and developer, consultant. I'm working on numerous other projects currently, in addition to the Beet and Emergency Arts Downtown Cocktail Room. I love downtown Las Vegas. I believe in it. To reiterate what Councilman Ross said, I think it's really important that, over the next year or two, that we become the most business-friendly city in the country. I don't think settling for improvement is going to be good enough. So I believe in downtown. I live it, I breathe it, and I'm here every day.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Are there any recommendations for different categories?
Mayor Goodman, I just had a question, if I could, for Bill. We have this committee that's made up for what is currently existing as the, our, excuse me, redevelopment agency, sorry. But anyway, we have this committee that's developed for the redevelopment agency as it exists today. Now, what happens when we add a lot more? Do you have another redevelopment agency, or does this redevelopment agency take care of all?
Councilwoman, thank you. I think the intention is that this Citizen Advisory Committee is going to serve all the redevelopment areas that are within the city. So to reference your expansion that we're working on that is not completed yet, I think the intention is for this body, since we do have representation from all three of the impacted wards that the RDA covers, including the expansion, the intention is for this committee to serve that new area. I would mention that we do have staggered terms, so some of these seats are going to be coming open quite regularly, so there will be an opportunity in the future, once we have, presuming we have the expansion done, to add a resident or a business owner within the expansion area to this committee. So we set up the process to allow for that, and that this committee is going to serve both the current redevelopment areas, as well as any future expansion.
And the reason why I asked is, when this came out, and we looked for people to represent Ward One, because Ward Run now only has a very tiny area, one which is a girly place and the other which is vacant land right now. So we couldn't find people who fit in that category, and I'm very pleased that the lady did come to you and ask to be in the committee, and I'm very pleased that she was selected for the committee. My only concern is you will be adding, if you do what you're planning to do, as I understand, you'll be adding a lot to the RDA, and there'll be a lot more people who would be eligible, who were interested in this committee, but couldn't apply for it because they didn't meet all the requirements.
And we certainly could look at the bylaws in the future, and if there was a desire from the council and from the committee itself to expand and grow the size of the committee to make sure we had representation from that new area, we could take a look at that. The current intent, however, is just to have those nine seats. I would also mention, these meetings are going to be open meetings. It's official board and commission of the city, so the public's invited to attend, so we can get the input not only from residents of the current redevelopment area, but the residents and the property owner of those expansion areas, because those are impacted neighborhoods and commercial districts as well.
And I mentioned this only to keep it in your mind, that we have, Ward One represents an area that is called downtown. Where Carolyn lives is downtown. Where I live is downtown. We never would have thought of it some time ago, but it's downtown. And the business people, perhaps along Charleston, for example, where they're developing a business association now, they never had an opportunity to be involved in this committee, and they will have different types of needs, in a way. And so I just want you to keep that in mind as you move ahead, and keep it open for them to come and be part of it, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And I would ask you the question, are the meeting dates of the RDA posted online on our website?
They will be. The dates have not been set yet, but it's going to be an official board and commission, just like the other commissions, like Historic Preservation, so forth.
So they could plan if they want to attend or make comment anybody in our city?
Correct. And they'll be posted as well, just like the meeting we're at today.
So listen to that, everybody. If you want to listen to it and learn from it, do come on down. Thank you, Mr. Art. Is there a motion, please?
I'll move to approve.
You're on today. Thank you, Councilwoman. There's a motion on the floor. Please vote, please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Congratulations, and thank you, Amy and Michael, this is wonderful, and everybody else. We will now move on to item 49 for Possible Action, Historic Preservation Commission, H. Richard Covet, term expires 9/19/2013. That was a resignation. Is there a recommendation?
Lynn Fag, Director of Planning, staff would request the appointment of Mr. Donald Hotchkiss to the Category Three seat, which requires experience in construction.
Thank you. A recommendation by Mr. Fag for Donald Hotchkiss. Any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion on the floor. Please vote. Motion carries, and he will be informed. Congratulations to Mr. Hotchkiss. We will move on to item 50 for Possible Action, Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, Stavin R. Corbett Team Expiration 11/2, which is today, 2011. Is there a motion, Councilman Anthony?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce to the mayor and the Las Vegas City Council, Joseph R. Calo Jr. Joe, would you mind coming down here, please? Let me tell you a little bit about Mr. Calo. He has a very long history in law enforcement and public safety. He's currently a firearm specialist with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department. He has a master's and a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He is a graduate of the very prestigious FBI National Academy. He is a graduate of the very prestigious FBI National Academy, 1978, 113th session. He spent 18 years with the Nevada State Gaming Control Board, and he spent 20 years with the Poughkeepsie Police Department, retiring as a police lieutenant. So, I know public safety for our parks and recreation centers will be a big deal for Mr. Calo, but just as important, he is a, he is very active in our parks. He is, plays senior softball twice a week at Lorenzi Park, and he is a supervisor involved in our senior softball recreation center, supervising coaches and managers, and it is very much my honor to nominate Joe Calo to the Parks and Recs Advisory Commission.
Thank you. Anything you would like to add to that illustrious background and introduction?
No, that's quite adequate. Thank you.
I would ask one thing, condition for my vote. Do you have a place for my husband? He wants to pitch so badly, somewhere, and I keep telling him, you know, you can't even get the ball over the plate at the 51s, so could he possibly come for a tryout?
We could take care of the former mayor. We'd be glad to do that. He's a good friend of us.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I will have an appointment to this board here. I was told, we just found out I had an appointment, I think, just last week, so I'm looking for someone to fill a spot. I think someone's going to expire on this committee, and I want to make sure that I do a good job of finding an appointment as good as our mayor pretended.
Okay, let's do this first, if we can, and then we'll come back on a second.
All right, because I had some questions about the board, the commission itself. If you want to do that off the record, fine.
If that's all right with you, Councilman?
Go ahead.
Okay, let's move forward on this nomination, please. The motion has been made, I think.
Yep, my motion is to nominate Joe Calo.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Would you please vote? Please post. I'm having Oscar call you. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the council bestowing their confidence in me on such an important board in our community, and I can assure you that I will do a very good job for both you and the community members I serve. Thank you.
We're quite confident. Thank you. Councilman Coffin, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. If you look at the literature that backs up this material, it's hard to find out who actually is the person who appoints the members, because the mayor pro temp, I think in the minutes, appointed a lot of people, but they weren't necessarily from Ward Three. It was one of those things where I think the minutes reflect the person who made the motion, and sometimes, in the rush of things, Councilman Reese looks like he appointed more than half the commission, but I know that's not the case. So, I know what I am looking for in replacements, if I have one, two, or three, I'm not sure, are some people, and I'm going to say this to the public, you might be watching this program today, too, manager, if you find any folks apply. This board, apparently, 19 years ago, took over the duties of the golf board. And as a consumer of city golf products for 55 years, I want to make sure that the commission is actually looking at golf business. We have four city-owned municipal golf courses. In the old, old days, the golf board was a very important board, had a lot of impact on how we managed our golf courses. That kind of disappeared, and I don't know what's happening now in the golf board or the functions, but I, in talking to a couple of members of the commission, they don't even discuss golf anymore. So, I need to find somebody to get on this board who represents, who works for, you know, who plays golf at our municipal golf courses, like the Muni, or Angel Park, or Desert Pines, which is in my ward, or, you know, the, even the little golf course, the short executive course up on Durango, Durango Hills. So, you know, first of all, I guess I'm going to need some clarification. Are they really still doing the functions of the golf court? And do you know, Your Honor, manager, if, in fact, they are?
I believe when the, when the council adopted the new ordinance, almost 20 years ago now, it probably integrated those responsibilities into that board's current charge. So, right now, basically, they have a lot of things that they're brought up to speed on, how things are working, get the feedback, as well as, obviously, they're very instrumental in some of the naming activities that go on. To the best of my knowledge, that was the last time that board really was updated, as far as their duties and responsibilities. What we could do is go back, do a little more history. As you know, we're working with them right now to review their charge, as it relates to that park naming responsibility. We can certainly review that to find out what kinds of golf-related information has been making their, making its way to that committee, and to what end, so that we can bring the council up to speed on how much work is actually being done by them on that front.
Okay, I appreciate that, because I want to make sure we're overseeing the activities of the boards. I mean, of the courses, I know you would do it in, through the line of, you know, management that you have, but I just played five rounds of golf at the Muni two weeks ago in tournaments, and I have some comments I would make to anybody who is in charge of supervising the contract and the responsibilities of the contractor who's running the course for us.
We can certainly put that on briefing maybe for next week, and get you updated on the current status of all those contracts, and any review that's occurred in the most recent past.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions, comments? If not, please, is there a motion?
I already did.
Oh, I'm so sorry. That was right. We have moved on. I'm so glad everybody's awake up here. Item number 51, Recommending Committee, Bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill Number 2011-36. Councilman Barlow is not here. Do you wish to have the bill read? Which I am going to say, yes, we will read the bill. Mr. Jerwick?
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2011-36 is in order to update Chapter 20, ask 6.02 of the Municipal Code relating to business licenses generally and to provide related matters.
Councilman Coffin, do you wish to make a motion on this?
As a member of the recommending committee, I would move that we adopt this.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to Item Number 52, Bill Number 2011-37. Councilman Anthony, do you wish to have the bill read?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Jerwick.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2011-37, in order to amend the business licensing provisions to adjust the regulatory and fee provisions that apply to certain professional businesses, employees of such businesses, and provide related matters. Your Honor, this is going to be read today as a First Amendment. Unfortunately, the First Amendment did not make it into the backup. Mr. Steed is with me here today to put those amendments on the record with your permission.
Please.
Yes, thank you. The First Amendment should have been provided to you electronically, but what it does, what the committee passed out yesterday, is on page five of the ordinance, there is a discussion of certain categories of licenses that would pay an annual business license fee of $150. We have added, at the request of the Association of Realtors, the category Real Estate Broker Salesperson, and then further down, where it talks about their relationship to a location or doing business within the city, we replace that language at their request. It would now read, works out of a location within the city, or in the case of a person acting as a property manager, either works out of a location within the city or manages property located within the city. That was the First Amendment that was approved by the committee yesterday.
That was approved. Okay, so, do you have that on record, Mrs. Clerk?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. So, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. The recommending committee took a look at the amendment to the bill and adopted it yesterday. It was more of a technical amendment, Your Honor, so I think that substantially it stands, and with the corrections, I move for the amend and do pass, or I'm not sure of the language. I want to make sure.
On motions, while you have a First Amendment, we ask you to make a motion to approve the bill, First Amendment.
Okay, then I move to approve the bill, First Amendment.
There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item Number 53, Bill 2011-41, Councilman Anthony, do you wish to have the bill read?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill 2011-41, in order to providing for the issues of the city of Las Vegas of its general obligation, limited tax, medium-term bonds, Series 2011A and Series 2011B taxable in combined aggregate principal amount, not to exceed $36 million, $500,000, for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, and equipping building projects, redevelopment projects, fire protection projects, street projects, providing for the deals concerning the bonds to project cash proceeds, and providing for related matters.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, thank you very much. As the mayor pro temp served in Councilman Barlow's absence yesterday as chair of the recommending committee, he ought to be doing all this work, but I'm going to take care of the load. Don't worry. Oh, thank you. Well, there's a lot in this bill. It's $36 million, but the sources of money are in different directions, and they're all important. For example, the West Side School improvements to be paid from license plate revenues provided by the commission, Centennial Commission, new energy-efficient street light projects to be repaid from energy cost savings generated by the very own project, sidewalk replacement projects around town, especially in the center part of town, and fire protection projects from Fire Safety Initiative Fund. So, this is, we have the ability to pay, we have the cash flow to pay them, and to roll these things over. So, I would move for the approval of this bill.
Thank you very much, Councilman. I mean, those are some wonderful jobs for these funds. Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Move on to Item 54. Items 54 through 56, Bills 2011-3A through 2011-40 are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. We will move on to new bills.
I thought we adopted the one on the...
This is Item Number 57. Items 57 and 58, Bills 2011-42, 2011-43, will be heard at the recommending committee meeting on Tuesday, November 15, 2011. I would like to have these bills read, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Bill Number 2011-42, in order to update the provisions of Municipal Code pertaining to licensing and regulations of massage establishments and provide related matters. And finally, Bill Number 2011-43, in order to update Chapter 6.69 of the Municipal Code pertaining to licensing and regulation of reflexology, and to provide further related matters.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion? Do we have to make a motion on that?
No, Your Honor. This is just signed to recommending.
And the new bills, 2011-42 and 2011-43, are assigned to Councilmen, Members Barlow and Councilman Coffin for review. And thank you. This morning's session will be recessed until 1:00. Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you for pointing. I'm looking at the...
Does that help, Glenn?
Very much. Yeah. I can do that. Because you have five good stuff. I'm a curator. Sure. You do. No problem. I should let you know that the members on the website are really good, too. I have a current, I thought she did a really nice job. I'm here. I'm here. I tried really hard, gentlemen, but I really... I thought about mistaking them all, but I did have a problem with that. Somebody would have went, maybe you're lying down. Right. Okay. I tried really hard, gentlemen, but I really... I thought about mistaking them all, but I did have a problem with that. Somebody would have went, maybe you're lying down. Right. Okay. Great. But the problem that I'm having is that so much is tired. Yeah. Stan, we should have just looked at the man. Because so much is tired. We thought they did this at first. Because...
Is it about the tires?
It's about the bike.
Okay. Okay, I got you now. We'd like to...
So, she's going to...
No, we just have to call him.
Okay. We'll follow up.
But they've used it for so long. Well, the RTC, I brought that up with you. Former commander. But you have to reclaim it, so this will address the situation.
Okay. Okay.
The thing is, the thing is, this has been going on for 37 years. So, you have to go back and research the spark.
We'll do whatever it takes. We'll get in touch with the team.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks.
I told him last time. I put this on this side, so you have to sit on this side, because this is my good ear.
Oh. You're the reason. I'm like, you're awesome. But the curb cuts and everything are there. They just need to reclaim.[1401.96]
Somebody would have went, maybe you're lying down.
Oh, right.
Four road seats down.
Oh, yeah.
I tried really hard, Johnson, but I really...
Oh, he wasn't down.
I thought about mistaking them all, but I didn't have a problem with that.
Somebody would have went, maybe you're lying down.
Oh, right.
I tried really hard, Johnson, but I really...
Oh, he wasn't down.
I thought about mistaking them all, but I didn't have a problem with that.
Somebody would have went, maybe you're lying down.
Oh, right.
Four road seats down.
Oh, yeah.
So they can't see me.
No, no, no.
Oh, so...
Oh, God, nice. Steph was going to call.
Was it Carlin's or...
No, no, no. No, that was foundation legs.
Okay.
It was a button.
Okay.
But the problem that I'm having is so much time.
Yeah.
Stan, we should have just looked at the man.
Because so much time.
We thought they did this at first.
Is it about the tires?
It's about the bike.
Okay, okay, I got you now.
We'll follow up.
But they've used it for so long.
Well, the RTC I brought in there was former commissioner.
Keep it in mind.
But you have to reclaim it. So this is what I address.
Okay, okay.
The thing is, this has been going on for three and seven years.
You have to go back and research the spark.
We'll do whatever it takes.
We'll get in touch with the team.
Okay.
The thing is, this has been going on for three and seven years. You have to go back and research the spark.
We'll do whatever it takes.
Okay.
I told him last time.
I put this on this side, so you have to sit on this side because this is my good ear.
Oh.
You're the reason.
But the curb cuts and everything are there, they just need to reclaim.
Welcome back to the afternoon session today, and we are starting with item number 59 for possible action. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table, withdrawn, or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 64 and 65, SCP-42182 and SDR-41600, applicant Barnett Lieberman, owner 305 Las Vegas LLC, 2.67 acres at the southwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Fourth Street, request by the applicant to withdraw without prejudice, and that will be my motion.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote, please post. Thank you, motion carries. Item number 60, public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 3204 Teresa Avenue for fees in the amount of $1,815.25 and assess a maximum of $38,000 in daily civil penalties. Property owner Jose Luis Alcantara Garcia, this is in Ward 3, Councilman Coffin. This is a public hearing, I now declare it open as the property owner present.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Michael Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager with the city, and I would just give you a brief...
Welcome.
Thank you, ma'am. I'll give you a brief summary of this case. The case was initiated in June 7th of this year and was closed September 21st of this year. We issued a notice and order to the property owner on July 5th, and we received no compliance or response to that. In the course of our investigation, we conducted 11 inspections, and the city had to expend funds to actually abate the nuisance conditions on the property. That abatement work was completed on September 15th, and the abatement work consisted of removal of waste, refuge, high vegetation from all areas, the application of herbicide, and the boarding of unsecured doors and windows. The city's out-of-pocket expenses in performing the sub-abatement work is $1,815.25, and the assessment of civil penalties has totaled $38,000 for a total out-of-pocket expenses and civil penalties of $39,815.25.
And could you give us the major cross streets on that, please, and the value by Zillow on that home as it is?
The value on Zillow as of October 28th is 47, uh, this year, is $47,000, and Senior Code Enforcement Officer Ozuna will give you the major cross streets.
Thank you.
Hi, Vicky Ozuna from Code Enforcement. The major cross streets are Pecos and Washington.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Councilman Coffin.
I have a question. Mike, welcome, first of all. It's your first council meeting, so thank you and welcome. You've left Tendersen to come to us.
Yes, sir.
Well, we're delighted to have the best. I want to know if that's been foreclosed upon, is it...
No, sir. This property is not in foreclosure or has been foreclosed on.
But there was no contact from...
There was no reply to our notices and order to the property owner.
Do we know if the owner is deceased or in some way or another incapacitated?
The officers are required to send the property owner the notice to the address on the assessor's office. We don't really have a way to check if people are deceased. So what we do is we send out to any known addresses, even if it's not the assessor's office, and we got no reply back on this case. We also did check into the foreclosure status, and at one point it was in foreclosure, but then the bank rescinded it. So they took it back out of foreclosure status. They give it back to the property owner. But again, we had no contact from the property owner.
And no one's responding to calls or letters?
No.
Okay, well, I still think we need to recover hard costs, and there's really no harm in going ahead and assessing the administrative fines, even though they then will probably add up to the equivalent of the value of the house. We'll have to work that out later, and maybe doing that will get somebody's attention to respond to a letter. So at this point, we'll certainly, I think, I'm going to move...
Okay, this is a public hearing, so if anybody would like to be heard on this item, please come forward, state your name, and make your comments, please.
Yes, thank you, Todd Pollard. Councilman Coffin, I think it's real important that you're keeping these fees on in order to force the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that's the, this councilman's intent is to try to do that, and then we'll see. If we can't find the owner, I just hope he hasn't somehow become fallen ill or something. Go ahead.
My apologies, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anthony Hodges, well, they say this one here has been in and out of foreclosure, whatever, it's back to the homeowner, whatever. I guess somebody keeping up the taxes, whatever. So wait, look, you may have to lean on this one to get your money, because this thing to be in and out all over the place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Please come forward, state your name, and make your comments, please.
Yes, thank you, Todd Pollard. Councilman Coffin, I think it's real important that you're keeping these fees on in order to force the issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Well, that's the, this councilman's intent is to try to do that, and then we'll see. If we can't find the owner, I just hope he hasn't somehow become fallen ill or something. Go ahead.
My apologies, sir, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Anthony Hodges, well, they say this one here has been in and out of foreclosure, whatever, it's back to the homeowner, whatever. I guess somebody keeping up the taxes, whatever. So wait, look, you may have to lean on this one to get your money, because this thing to be in and out all over the place.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item? Councilman Coffin?
Your Honor, I move for approval.
There's a motion, please vote, please post. Motion approved, thank you. We'll move on to item number 61. Public hearing for possible action to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 5120 Silent Hope Avenue for fees in the amount of $2,640 and assess a maximum of $31,500 in daily civil penalties. Property owner Evelyn Sosa Toledo, Ward 6, that's in Councilman Ross's area. This is a public hearing, I now declare it open, and is the property owner here. And Mr. Bowes, please continue.
Thank you. Mike Bowes, Code Enforcement Manager. The cross streets for this property are Jones and Grand T. Time. This case was initiated on June 7th of 2011 and closed September 21st, June 1011. We issued a notice and order on September 5, 2011 regarding substandard nuisance conditions on the property. We did not receive any responses to those, that notice and order. In conjunction of dealing with this case, we conducted eight inspections, and the city had to abate the violations at city's expense. That work was completed on September 15th and 16th. The abatement work consisted of removal of high vegetation in all areas and the application of herbicide. The city's out-of-pocket expenses are $2,640, and the civil fines have totaled $31,500. The total for both out-of-pocket expenses and civil penalties are $34,140. This property is in foreclosure. During the course of the case, the lender on the property did change. We contacted a new lender, and they felt that respond to our notice and order or request to work with us on this property. As of September 27th, 2011, the Xilo value of the property is $493,400.
Wow, it's a very pretty building. Thank you. This is a public hearing, I declare it open. Anyone who wishes to make comment, please come forward, state your name.
Anthony Hodges, this sounds like a pretty nice piece of property worth quite a bit of money. The objective is, well, look, you should be able to get your money from somewhere. Is it in foreclosure for the bank?
Yes.
Hey, get your money. Good.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? If not, I close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Councilman Ross?
There is, Mayor, and council members, but wouldn't it be great if we had some kind of foreclosure registration program so that we could have stopped having to spend taxpayer money on the abatement of this property and the bank or lending institution took responsibility for maintaining it? Wouldn't that be nice? Mayor and council, I've moved to follow staff's recommendation for the entire amount on this property.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote, please post. Motion carries. Thank you and welcome, Mr. Bowes, and thank you, Ms. Ozuna. Appreciate it. We will, excuse me, now move on to the consent agenda. Those are items, starting with item 62. Item 62 and 63 are on the consent agenda, are considered to be routine, and are recommended for approval by the planning department. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda, item 62 and 63?
Motion to approve.
Councilman Anthony has made the motion to approve. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much. So that was joint. Moving on to 60, items 64 and 65, they have been withdrawn without prejudice. So we will move on to item 66. EOT 43097, abeyance item, re-notification, extension of time, non-conforming use, public hearing. Applicant owner Bank of America for possible action on a request for an extension of time for a non-conforming tavern at 4061 North Rancho, Ward 6, Councilman Ross. Note, application amended to applicant owner Bank of Nevada. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, I now declare it open. Is the applicant present or a representative?
Yes. Good afternoon, Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, appearing on behalf of Bank of Nevada. This is an application for an extension of time to allow the non-conforming tavern use to continue, and this property was foreclosed upon on July 29th, and in order to market it for its purposes, they'd like the extension to be granted, and we ask that you follow staff's recommendation for approval. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Roberts. What is the name of this tavern? I don't see it.
It was Cactus Club.
Okay.
It closed on, in April.
Thank you. Anyone wishing to be heard, I declare this open, please state your name.
My name, Anthony Hodges, this is the first time I read in the two banks, right? Bank of America and Bank of Nevada, right?
It was incorrectly listed as Bank of America. It's actually owned by Bank of Nevada.
But it's owned by Bank of Nevada? Well, anyway, I just hope, since the banks are involved, the cities ought to be able to get their money some kind of way. I hope so, anyway. Thank you.
Question on this city clerk, where it's listed on item 66, applicant owner Bank of America.
That's why the note was out after the planning commission clarified. Who do you want to know?
Okay, so that on record is clarified. Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Okay, hearing done. Is there a motion, Councilman Ross?
Yes, Mayor, thank you very much. And just one more time, a clarification, it is not in the ownership of Bank of America, but Bank of Nevada.
Correct.
And that was the confusion. I did receive six protest cards in response to this, this notice that went out for the extension of time, and I want to express to those individuals who had sent those in that this is, was an existing tavern, it's been out there in US 95, where Rancho Drive for many, many years, in the neighborhood that I grew up in, right behind, close to the neighborhood that I grew up in. So all this is, is an extension of time for that, that continued use until the bank obviously finds a buyer for it. My motion is to approve, follow staff's recommendation.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote, please post.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Roberts. Appreciate it. Moving on to items 67 through 69. 67, MOD 41437, for possible action on a request for a major modification of a previously approved rezoning, ZOAN 16580, to amend the master development plan and development standards. Number 68, ROC 40981, for possible action on a request for a review of condition of previously re-approved rezoning, ZOAN 16580, to eliminate conditions 5, 7, and 9. Number 69, SDR 40980, for possible action on a request for a major amendment to a previously approved site development plan or review, SDR 16581, to divide two large buildings into nine smaller ones for a 78-unit assisted living community. The applicant owner is the New Vista Ranch, Inc. The project is located on 15.05 acres at 7875 North Rainbow Boulevard. The planning commission and staff recommend approval of all items. These items are in Ward 6, Councilman Ross, and are public hearings which I now declare open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, Your Honor. Good afternoon, Chris Kemfer and Tabitha Fittiman here on behalf of New Vista Community. As Councilman Ross, who is right there, will recall, I was proud enough to represent New Vista Community when we first came before the city council several years ago with our initial development plan. This plan is actually a reduction in scope and intensity from what was previously approved. However, because it's, our particular zoning code requires that when there be any modification, even one that's a reduction, we have to bring it back, and that's what we are doing. And Councilman Ross, I was mentioning how you were here when we first came several years ago on the approval of New Vista Community. At that point in time, we were blessed to have in the audience numerous members of the community, which consist of intellectually challenged Southern Nevadans, and if I might say, from my interaction with these people, I am convinced that God put them on earth to teach us how we're supposed to treat each other. And this is an incredible community, it serves an incredible segment of our community, and we are proud to represent this item. In the audience is Paul Kenner, who's on the board of directors, and should you have any questions, appropriate for his consideration. We also have Michelle Jackman, Jackson, and Kelly DeGuzman, also instrumental in the New Vista Community. Again, should you have any questions of them. I think most importantly, I want to thank Councilman Ross for his active involvement in making sure that all parties got together and we worked out issues. We want to thank the neighbors very much. There was a lot of neighborhood interest and involvement, and we addressed to every extent we reasonably could the issues that the neighbors had. We want to thank staff for its recommendation of approval. We want to thank the planning commission for its unanimous recommendation of approval. And what makes it nice is we accept all of the conditions that have been imposed on us. And if you have questions as to the plan or would like a brief description, Tabitha can do that. Otherwise, we would respectfully ask your approval of our application subject to staff conditions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on this item or these items? And please state your name.
Sorry about that, Mayor.
Halloween's over.
Thank you, Mayor. I know, I skipped the anyway. Anthony Hodges, this is a good thing, I mean, this is, this is so hot, it's burning me. Mr. Ross, good luck. It's a good thing.
Anyone else wishing to be heard, please step forward, state your name.
Joe Maviglia, I'm the executive director of H&amp;E Training Schools. It's a make-work project that we can get workers that are qualified for as low as $3.60 an hour. Now, I'm not going to tell you how we do it, but we can do it. So when we have projects for the city, connection like Mr. Kemper's project or any other project that needs qualified certified workers that will work under a contractor's license, a B. license, that enable them to go in and retrofit anything that has to be retrofitted, and a cost factor that is so low, it's staggering, we're able to do that. We figured out how to do it.
Thank you. It is not even built yet, so if you would really stay to this, I appreciate it.
Doesn't matter. We can build that, too.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
We just want to know we're out there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward, state your name. Hello.
I'm Carol Peck. I live near this project, and by the way, I'm going to insult somebody, I only brought seven, but I brought these packages because I emailed and mailed everything to the planning commission, and when I got there, they had them in their packets but hadn't read them. So I brought packets with me this time.
Yes, to the clerk, please.
Thank you, ma'am. What's in the packets are just simply pictures of my property, Rule's property, he's here, Pam Bailey spoke to y'all last week, and Rule and Pam get up here and say they're the most affected, but if you look at those pictures, they're far from being affected from this. I'm, myself and four or five other neighbors will be looking directly at this 52,000 square foot gym. You know, I don't really have any illusions about this. I know it's a done deal, but there's some things I think I'd really like to get on the record. Most importantly, that people have said that there will be no commercial in our area, but I've learned if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. And they're going to be, this, this project is open to all of Southern Nevada, which means our little residential area now will be having... that needs qualified certified workers that will work under a contractor's license, a B license, that enable them to go in and retrofit anything that has to be retrofitted, and a cost factor that is so low, it's staggering, we're able to do that. We figured out how to do it.
Thank you. It is not even built yet, so if you would really stay to this, I appreciate it.
Doesn't matter. We can build that, too.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
We just want to know we're out there.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Please come forward, state your name.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Carol Peck. I live near this project. And by the way, I'm going to insult somebody. I only brought seven, but I brought these packages because I emailed and mailed everything to the planning commission. And when I got there, they had them in their packets but hadn't read them. So I brought packets with me this time.
Yes, to the clerk, please.
Thank you, ma'am. What's in the packets are just simply pictures of my property, Rul's property. He's here, Pam Bailey spoke to you all last week. And Rul and Pam get up here and say they're the most affected, but if you look at those pictures, they're far from being affected from this. I'm, myself and four or five other neighbors will be looking directly at this fifty-two-thousand square foot gym. You know, I don't really have any illusions about this. I know it's a done deal, but there's some things I think I'd really like to get on the record. Most importantly, that people have said that there will be no commercial in our area, but I've learned if it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's probably a duck. And they're going to be, this, this project is open to all of Southern Nevada, which means our little residential area now will be having traffic going through like crazy. They're allowed to have sixteen fundraisers every year. At the planning commission, they talked about everything from Junior Olympics to wine tasting. They started to pin them down on the numbers of people that could generate and then backed off of it. I'd like to get, I'd like to have somebody ask some poignant questions about that, because we're the ones that are going to have to suffer with it. That gym in the office building, everything is going to be almost directly halfway between Seville Middle School and Arbor High School. There's hundreds of kids that walk up and down Grand Teton to get to that high school and that, in the middle school. They may not be intellectually challenged, but they have the right to your protection as well. And with this being opened to all of Southern Nevada, the traffic there is going to be very, very dangerous. So I don't know why we would discriminate against one class of children versus another thing. We have no issues at all with the residential buildings. In fact, we appreciate what they have done with the nine buildings. They're actually very nice. It's the commercial use that we are objecting to. The gym in the office building, in the gym alone, there's fifteen offices. We were told it was for corporate use, and yet they say they have like four or five corporate officers. So I don't know for sure what they're going to do with the other ten offices. My guess is rent them out to something. And I would also like to have on the record that any other further changes to this have to come back, and we have to all be notified. In my neighborhood, there's, there's over twenty objections there, but in my neighborhood, there's just three of us that get these notices. We're just too far away. It's so, that's it, I guess. I just, I highly object to the commercial aspect of this. It's going to, we're going to be fighting this now, you know, for the rest of the time we live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard on this item, please, or these items, please come forward, state your name, and make your comments.
Hello. My name is Rul Westover at seven-six-eight-five North Rainbow. And yes, we are some of the most affected, living right on Rainbow. And I just want to state for the record that, yes, we do approve everything that they've changed and welcome NuVista. And we did get several signatures, which I think have already been put on the record, and mostly of people who live right down Rainbow and who are mostly affected. And I think we have about fifty-seven signatures approving and supporting this. So we welcome NuVista, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Hearing none. Thank you. One more. Excuse me, didn't see you way back there.
Good afternoon, everyone.
My name is...
Mary Oviulho, sixty-five-eighty Whispering Sands Drive, Las Vegas, Nevada. Several years ago, we've had issues. We went through all this planning work that we're looking at on the screen right now. It's come a long way from then. I feel it's in the best interest of the neighborhood the way it is right now. It has definitely broken up the buildings and put them into a more residential setting that can be digested by the residents in the area. And it does impact us a lot. I know Ms. Peck said that there was issues about her being impacted a lot. She's in a gated community. We're in rural community. We have horses and so on and so forth. And this is in the middle of our neighborhood. So I do recommend the way this is going forward, and I do want to welcome NuVista and thank them for working with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I know Councilman Ross has been in every single meeting he possibly attend to help the, the community accept the proposal. Thank you, sir.
My name is Jack LaFlesh, and I want to go on record as objecting. Frankly, I was here several years ago when they came down and brought their residents with them. I objected to the entire project at that time. I still do. I understand, as Carol said, it's a done deal. But the, the commercial facilities are, are really scary, because there's talk about, directly across the street, and there's been a lot of publicity about the property across the street. The egg farm is going to become a commercial development, and they will also have a liquor store. And so if these rumors are true, I, I just want to add my name as objecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard?
Mayor Goodman, may I?
Yes, Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you. And Councilman Ross, I don't want to steal your thunder, and I won't. I, I just want to make a quick comment about the comment-done deal. Folks, I respect your efforts and I respect your opinions, but I didn't even know anything about this project until just a couple of days ago. And I'm just speaking for myself. I have a policy that I've had since I joined the council of not making up my mind until I hear everything, and to this day, that's my policy. So when you speak of something being a done deal, I mean, I know my colleagues appreciate the public input and everything like that, but nothing is really a done deal until we hear everything from this dais. I just, just wanted to say that.
If I might add to that, Your Honor. Councilman, when I'm done doing what I'm doing, I think I am going to work with homeowners' communities and whatever, and show them the kinds of things that are effective and what are not. And when you come up and say that people who really honestly weigh these kinds of decisions very deliberately, and they're very important to you, that it doesn't serve their case well when they do suggest that this is something that has been done other than in the public forum. The meetings that Councilman Ross has had was designed to make sure that neighbor input was received, and so we honored his request and met with neighbors over and over again. So if, if doing those things was what we should have done, then I'm, I'm plead guilty to doing everything we were asked to do. Let's get this commercial thing off the table. It is not a commercial establishment. We teach these people to make things that might be able to be sold other places. So nothing is sold on-site. You don't come in and buy things. It's not a retail center. There are places where they learn how to make things that can be sold at off-site locations. That's the only commercial neighbor, commercial consideration to this. Staff understands that. A condition is, I don't know if the condition is no retail operation, but certainly we agree to that and we accept that. We understand the concern that some neighbors have, that something else may morph into something bigger or it creates a precedent for something else. But these are intellectually challenged individuals who are being taught to be self-sufficient, and one of the things that gets them there is teaching them how to make things that they can then sell someplace else. So that's the only commercial aspect of this operation.
In fact, just to add to that, if I may, Your Honor, there is a, this, this development is subject to a development agreement that has been recorded against the property, and in that development agreement, it specifically prohibits the, the property owner to engage in commercial activity. So we've made that promise and that commitment to the neighbors and to Councilman Ross. I know that was very important to him and to this council when we were here in two thousand and seven, and we'll make it again. This is not a commercial activity. There will be no commercial activities on the property, and if we make any changes to that, we have to come back before you. And so we respect the neighbors' concerns, but we believe that they're addressed.
Thank you very much. And I am sure, counsel, that is, because it's of record, that is, in fact, as it should be?
It is. It is in your backup also, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor Goodman?
Yes, please, Councilman.
And as far as the renting out of any offices which are not now occupied, you would not be involved in renting out offices. They would only be used by those people in connection with the agenda they have, NuVista.
Yes.
Absolutely.
We have over a hundred employees now.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Who was the founder of NuVista?
I actually don't know that.
Somebody better know it.
June and Dick Herman started.
Yes, that's right. I just want you to know, I knew June personally. I worked with her when this was just a little seedling in her mind. I saw all the hard work the two Hermans did to build this up. To me, it's an amazing thing that this dream, I didn't know him as well, but this dream of hers has come to fruition. It's just magnificent, and I'm glad that you were able to work it out with most of the neighbors. And I, I do know in everything I did with the group, and I, I found that they were always honest, and they were, everything they did was first-class. So I, I just remember when they were, you know, scraping for a little money here, to help a child there, and something, and it was so hard on them. And to see this just shows you what the people in our city can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Anthony.
There was a question that Councilwoman Tarkanian asked that somebody from the audience answered. Could you come up here and identify yourself and give the answer, just for the record?
I'm Kelly DeGuzman, the CEO of NuVista.
Yeah, you gave an answer to a question?
There is no renting for that property.
No, just who founded it?
Who founded it? Oh, June and Dick Herman were the original founders.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
Your Honor, did you notice that the councilwoman cannot forget her teacher's background? She asked me the question, knowing the answer.
And she said, somebody better know the answer. I've, I've just been with people, you know, like Help Them Walk Again. I've seen people, and I always hoped in my heart that they would be remembered long after their hard work was done, and this shows it was remembered, even though, you know.
No, that was very kind of you, and people who do create things like this should be remembered. And shame on us who represent them for not knowing that. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilman Coffin, you had a comment.
Your Honor, yes, thank you very much. I think the question was answered about commercial. That's been done. The need for a number of offices is sometimes not so evident. I know some people objected to that, and in fact, and I did read the comments, and this has been kicking around for a few months, so I've seen it. So I'm not unprepared to vote. I think the important thing is that people have to know that these children need a lot of supervision. That's why there's a large staff and a lot of offices. The staff in a place like this needs a place to go. They need a place to not only sometimes take a break, but also to counsel individually in a private setting. So, you know, there shouldn't be nothing to fear about the number of offices that would be in a property like this. And I think about the question of sacrificing the safety or the rights of one set of children for the benefit of another set of children. You never know in your midst who amongst the set of children you think you're not protecting, who in fact need this kind of service. So you can be blessed to have it near you, and of course, residents who are still opposed will naturally have the right to observe and hold this organization to the letter of what we approve, if that's the vote. So I think that there's always a chance to come back and say, they're not doing the way they promised, and the record will hold that. So I think we all have that in mind. We have the welfare of the children first and foremost. Thank you.
Thank you. I will declare the public hearings closed. Councilman Ross, do you have a motion on item sixty-seven?
I do, Mayor, and Councilman. Thank you. If you can leave that picture up right there just for a minute. That's some great land out there. A little bit of water and some seeds. We have a vegetable garden or an orchard or something right there. Oh, that's right, there is an orchard right next to this, isn't there? I appreciate all your comments. I'm going to work backwards, if I may, with the mayor's permission. Mr. LaFlesh, I'm sure you did not mean to insinuate that this was ever a done deal. Certainly, this council works very hard to work with our neighbors, our community associations, and anyone affected by any type of development. So I know you didn't mean, mean it that way. I didn't take it that way, but I want that to be clear for the record. Mr. Westover, you made a comment about support and protests. Well, I've got the exact numbers. We've got twenty-seven protests, and this is from both meetings, the planning commission and the city council meeting. Seventy-three approvals from that neighborhood. And I'm not discounting what, what Ms. Peck said or Mr. LaFlesh said. I, I will correct a couple of things or point out to Ms. Peck, so she understands clearly the nature of the area you live in. Now, you live in the county. I think both of you live in the county as well. We have county islands in the city of Las Vegas, and certainly in Ward six. Grand Teton, I travel every single day. It is designed to be, and Bart Anderson Public Works, plumb me up if I get off course here, Grand Teton, I think, is designed to be a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot right-of-way. It's only half-finished. Is it a hundred-and-twenty-foot?
That's correct, sir.
A hundred-and-twenty-foot right-of-way going east and west, and I travel that road every day. I drive by this every day. I see it all the time. I see the orchard, I see the farm, and that's Sharon Linsenbart's farm. And Mr. LaFlesh, I assure you, as long as I am a Lasvagan, I will never support commercial use or a liquor store in that neighborhood, ever, whether I'm a city councilman or not. That's my neighborhood, too. And that picture that was up earlier shows, shows what the nature of that community looks like. It is rural on one side, it is urban on the other side. The applicants done a phenomenal job from a couple of years ago when we were addressing the same site plan, and how it was going to be structured. I, I mean, it's, it's, it's much better. And I assure you, and Ms. Fittiman, you'd have to help me, I can't remember how many meetings you had with the neighbors out there. Do you remember how many?
Yeah, well, we had at least two meetings where we noticed twelve-hundred people to each meeting. At the second meeting, there was over thirty people in attendance. And then I personally spoke to a number of different neighbors and emailed them for hours between the neighborhood meeting and the planning commission meeting. And then we had the planning commission meeting, of course, which we did hold. Both of those meetings were noticed, and then we are here before you, which was also noticed, again, to twelve-hundred people.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know what more we can do so that this doesn't appear to be a done deal, because nothing ever is a done deal as far as this council's, when it's released.
Right, and just to help that, Councilman, we made several changes to the plan that was submitted to staff originally in a couple of months ago.
Based on what?
Based on the meetings we had and the neighbors' input.
With the neighbors.
And obviously, Michelle, your liaison, was in attendance at all of those meetings. She was very concerned about the issues that the neighbors raised and the perception of this being a commercial activity. I mean, I've worked really hard at not thinking that this was a done deal, and then also, like I said, addressing the neighbors' concerns.
Okay. And I want that clear for the record, and I want the audience to understand that, and folks watching at home to understand that. And I want to address Rainbow. Rainbow doesn't go anywhere, either direction, really, north or south. It dead-ends eventually. So I really don't think that the use on Rainbow is going to, to increase all that much. Yes, there's a high school right up the street, right across from the orchard. A great high school, as a matter of fact. We've got great high schools in this city. Now, so there are a lot of children, Ms. Peck. I wouldn't say hundreds. I drive by there, like I said, all the time. I don't see hundreds of kids walking back and forth there. I see lots of kids. I wouldn't say hundreds. Rainbow being a dead end going both directions, Grand Teton planned to be a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot right-of-way, because it's only partially completed, that's where the traffic's going to be. The, the, it's already been discussed and mentioned on record, it will not be commercial use. Absolutely not. I've made it clear to you as the applicant. I've made it clear to Ms. Linsenbart, who has county property across the way. I'm not going to support that. It's a nice rural area. We're right up against the backside of Silverstone Ranch, so I want to make all that perfectly clear. I want to express to the neighbors that have both protested this and have supported this, thank you. Thank you for being involved and taking an active interest in your neighborhood. And you as the applicants, and you, I've been working with your firm for quite some time. You know how I operate, certainly in regards to these neighborhood meetings and how important they are to me. That being said, I had another thought, I just lost it. I'm going to, I'm going to move to follow planning commission's staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item sixty-six, Mayor and Councilman. I'm sorry, sixty-seven.
There's a motion? Please vote. Please post. Item sixty-seven carries.
Thought just came back. I want to ask, Ms. Fittiman, you may know this, Mr. Kemfer, you may know this. When is construction going to start? Okay, let me ask a different question. How is this getting paid for? Have you got the money right now to build it?
Well, it's, it's phased. This is a six-phased, uh, project development, Paul can speak to this, but this is like a twenty-year project. So the first phase is a resi- is residential homes that you see that are currently there in addition of that, and then the, the medical, uh, building which will serve the residents. So, and I don't know if Paul knows when that's gonna start.
And what I'm trying to get, and is Paul, is Paul gonna come up and talk about it? Come on up here, man, I'm gonna pick on you for a minute.
And Paul, if you'll state your name, please.
Certainly, Paul Kenner.
And Paul, what I'm trying to get at here is so the residents understand how this is gonna be done. Um, a lot of pro bono or free work has been put into this project, and I want that to be clear in the public's eyes, especially the neighbors' eyes. Um, I don't see anybody making a whole lot of money on this, and I want you to tell us about, and feel free to stop that you, you don't feel comfortable talking about, but how's the financing structured here? And when are you gonna start construction? That's what I want the public to know.
Uh, basically, how we designed this property, and one of the things that was really thought of for this period of time between the original approval and today, was the fact of how do you, you know, in, in these elements, uh, do a project that is this large? And, uh, one of the ways that we've accomplished that and, and look at this is a phasing plan that in- involved building these homes. They're, they basically have the character of a home, they're single-story. Uh, and those homes are the first phases, the first five phases, four or five. And, uh, so basically, over the next, let's say, six years, you'll see one at a time being built. And these are homes that will have six, um, individuals that will be taken care of with, uh, of either one or two caregivers within each one of those homes. And, you know, it goes on to like the traffic, you know, these individuals don't drive. So the impacts are gonna be so subtle, I'm not sure. The only impact I think that most people adjacent to this will see is the beautification of this property, is the transformation of, of something that, you know, currently... You know, it, it's...
I knew we should not have asked Mr. Kenner to come up here. Mr. Kenner is so involved in this project, and he loves the people and the purpose of it. He never can get anything out, 'cause it means the world to him. The bottom line is, is that this is phased over a considerable period of time. It's based almost entirely on contributions that we get from, um, uh, from the community and the events that we hold. Uh, the neighbors are not gonna see anything that's really gonna change, uh, because it will be the first phase being residential. It's going to be years before each, uh, these homes can be completed, so...
Well, we projected on the commercial side, hey, this commercial work, this, uh, the larger buildings that are the gymnasium and the support elements, those are the final phase. And we hope, you know, over a period of ten years, we have the capital to do those buildings 'cause of the cost, but all the first phases are just units, homes. And roughly...
Is there a starting time?
Yes, we think...
Do you have funding for one or two?
We believe, our first phase is one home, uh, with a medical, uh, assistance, uh, and those, that particular first phase, we hope, within the next eighteen months.
Excellent.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing Mr. Kenner to, to tell us that. I think it's important to recognize, you're building this, you have to get contributions, it takes time to raise money. At the same time, you have to take care of this wonderful population in our community, and I think that's significant. And I wanna thank you for going the extra mile, and I thought that was a perfect presentation. So you did a great job. I'm also gonna move, Your Honor, to follow Planning Commission's staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item sixty-eight.
Thank you, there's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries, and now on to item number sixty-nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Flynn, we got any additions or anything important?
No, we have no additions or corrections to the conditions of approval.
Your Honor, I've moved to follow Planning Commission's and staff's recommendation for approval of agenda item number sixty-nine, subject to all conditions, and good luck.
There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries, good luck.
Very good, very much.
Thank you, and Councilman Wolfson.
Please, Chris and Tabitha, before you leave, um, speaking of contributions, would you please tell us the name of your law firm?
Yes, uh, Kemfer, Kroll, Renshaw, Groenhour, and Fiorentina.
Keeps getting bigger. Uh, it's my understanding that you folks and your firm is performing these legal services at no cost to this client.
Yes.
Well, I think that that is, uh, commendable, and, uh, should be mentioned, because the cause is so great, and I don't wanna take away, Councilman Ross, you've done great work on this, but, you know, you're good lawyers, and, and normally, good lawyers charge fees for their services, but because this is such a special client for such a great, great cause, I just wanted to express our appreciation too and recognize, uh, your efforts that, uh, don't go unnoticed.
Well, thank you very much, Councilman, thank you.
Thank you, we're very proud, thank you. And let's move on to item seventy, please. Item seventy and seventy-one, um, item seventy, ROC four-two-two-three-three, applicant owner Sterling Park Owners Association, for possible action on a request for a review condition to delete condition number two of an approved block plan and building elevation review Z dash oh-oh-five-oh dash ninety, per N five bracket, which required the submittal of a master sign plan to the Department of Community Planning and Development for review and approval prior to the issuance of building permits for any individual on-premise signs on four-point-five-oh acres at seventy-four-hundred dash seventy-five-eighty on West Sahara. Number seventy-one, item seventy-one, variance four-two-two-three-four, applicant owner Benson and Bertoldo LLC, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow a twenty-five-foot-tall freestanding sign to have a zero-foot setback where five feet is required on point-three-two acres at seventy-four-oh-eight West Sahara. The Planning Commission and staff recommend approval of item seventy and denial of item seventy-one. These items are in Ward One. Councilwoman Tarkanian, our public hearings, which I now declare open, is the applicant pre- present?
Yes, Your Honor, good morning and good afternoon. Neil Beller on behalf of the applicant, Rich Henshaw on behalf of YESCO, and John Bertoldo, uh, one of the principals.
Okay, as far as item seventy, uh, there was a master sign plan that was supposed to have been, uh, on this project back in nineteen-ninety-three and was never submitted. Uh, to today's current code, um, would not require a master sign plan, so we're just asking to remove it off the conditions that were put on it in nineteen-ninety-three. All the signs that have been on the property, uh, have been permitted through the years, so...
Thank you. Is there anyone wishing to be heard on these items? Please come forward. And state your names.
Yes, thank you, Todd Farlow, two-forty and North Nineteenth Street. Do we have a picture of, of those signs the way they are now, that we had at the Planning Commission?
Isn't that the sign that's on...
What, the thing is, that there's a, a nice monument sign there now, and they're gonna tear that thing out. They're also planning on tearing out, I don't know if it's this one or, or the, or the, or the one on seventy-one, but they're gonna, there, right there, they're gonna tear the, the monument sign out. They're gonna tear the trees out and replace them with, with something else. First of all, one other thing, a palm is not a tree. A palm is a, a relative, the orchid, orchid plant, it's not a tree. So we're, let's talk about trees here. They're pulling out the trees. And I think that they, they said there was something about the structural thing on, of setting the monument sign or some, or, or, or some excuse. But anyway, that looks nice the way it, it is now. And to tear out the trees and that, to put in this, this, this sign that they's, that... Well, first of all, they have to take out the trees, because the sign that they're gonna put in, the trees are destructed. That was, that was the issue at the Planning Commission, and that's just not right. Just not right, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard on item number seventy-one, seventy or seventy-one? Please come forward.
Tough act to swallow, follow me. My name is Anthony Hart. Well, as you said, uh, seventy and seventy-one, they're related, and so one, you know, planning and the staff is against one and for the other. And I am concerned about trees too, but there comes a time, progress has to... Is the possibility that the trees could be repainted someplace? Well, let's, 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 let's see what we can do by getting the trees a little help along line, and, and let's progress and move forward, thank you. If they're gonna do something with the tree, that, that makes a difference, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard, or any comments you wish to make?
Yes, Your Honor, First of all, we are not going to be taking out the trees, uh...
Can you pull your microphone closer?
Or grow a little bit higher, okay.
He says he's your friend, I'm beginning to question that.
We, we are not, uh, taking out the trees. Effectively, what we are doing is modifying the existing trees to accommodate the proposed sign. Uh, if we effectively did what we could do, uh, then those trees would have to be removed and replaced. That was one of the issues, uh, that was brought up at the Planning Commission. Subsequent to that, uh, we reconnoited, if you will, uh, we've met, and, and what we will be doing is accommodating, uh, the proposed sign, uh, consistent with what, uh, the Planning Commission wanted, and that is keeping the aesthetic nature of the palm trees there, uh, the sign, uh, et cetera. And, and that is what we're requesting. In addition to which, if, uh, we're successful in terms of this endeavor, if we ever have to remove the sign, uh, we are willing, uh, to do so.
Can we go back a slide, please, to those two that said Sterling and the far one? DeLuca? Can we go back to that, please? Nope, next one. Please, nope, the one that was...
DeLuca.
Nope, keep going, there's another signage that shows the turquoise sign, and another one, that one.
That's it.
In position to the DeLuca and Associates is, are you currently aligned with that? Or are you back of that? Where are you in relation to that sign?
We would be actually in front of that. That, they have more frontage, um, than the property where we wanna put the sign. That sign right there is, um, about eleven-and-a-half feet back to the leading edge of the sign, and they still have, um, another ten feet to the building or so. We only have nineteen-and-a-half feet from the back of sidewalk to the building with a eight-and-a-half-foot encroachment.
Okay, do you have also a slide of what your proposal would look like?
Yes, we do.
Could you put that up, please?
With it in place, or...
Can you juxtapose it to the building?
Uh, yeah.
Please. Hard to see, is there any way to fix that so yours isn't as blurry as mine? I can't even see the signs, that's, okay. In the bottom, well, let's go to the top one, that is facing east, correct?
That is correct.
The blue one is that Sterling sign, and then newly positioned is your sign going past the corner. Correct? Is that sort of, yes, yes, that's what it will look like at the new stage.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
And the bottoms, the legs of that signage look, can you go back? Sorry to do this, but can you go back to what it looks like? Or will look like?
She wants the sign itself to show.
What is the base like? Are you seeing through it, is it solid to the ground? Now, is that opening, that's solid from seventy-four-oh-eight, that's solid?
Yeah, the pole cover's solid.
And the height is six-ten, what does that say?
Just twenty-four, uh, feet, six inches. The DeLuca sign, it sort of mirrors the DeLuca sign if you, if you look at it and as far as the aesthetics go. It's the same width of it, um, the DeLuca sign might even be a couple feet taller.
And is this changing technology on where it says in a crash, need an attorney fast? Is that a stable, one beautiful sign, or are you, um, having...
No, that's a LED.
It is.
Actually, what the sign is going to say is, uh, and that, this was an error, buckle up and do not text for safety. Uh, we, uh, that is gonna be revised, Your Honor.
Now, um, I could show you what we could do by code also. I'm gonna take a look at it.
Who's the owner of the property upon which your office sits? Do you own your own piece? I mean, that, the setback is so much less than that going further west, how'd that happen?
Uh, they, they do, Benson and Bertoldo, Joe Benson and John Bertoldo own the property.
And including the one to the west, too, where the setback or the amount of open land?
No, no, Your Honor.
That's Sterling, wait, let me just address that.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, Your Honor, John Bertoldo, uh, the, uh, there's Sterling Park one and two, and they, they're kind of sister developments that just, you could flip-flop them. And so the one where the DeLuca sign is, I believe, is Sterling Park one. We are Sterling Park two, and, uh, we have separate owners' associations within one and two. There's twelve owners within our association. And we took this, um, idea to them first to get their approval.
Your own or Sterling Park one?
Uh, well, first to our own and then to the other one. So we have, we have approval from, from our owners' association as well as the other one.
Could I just say that we're not considering anything related to the Sterling sign today, are we?
No, no.
No, it's really, that would be decided later. If at all, whatever you do there.
Well, the Sterling sign, I think, uh, uh, Councilwoman Tarkanian, I did, I did tell you that our, our association wants to update that turquoise nature.
That's right.
Cosmetically, but not structurally.
Right, so they're only talking about not having the turquoise color. And may, moving it in, moving it in more with the beiges that they have now, but that's not on today's agenda.
That is correct, Councilwoman, that is correct.
But it's just paint, not structural.
And there is precedent up the street, uh, why don't you address that, Rich, if you would?
Yeah, but this is, back to this, this is what could be done by code. Uh, we could, we could build a sign forty-foot tall, and it would have the cantilever over the building. Uh, aesthetically, what we're proposing, I feel, looks much better than what we could do here.
So the, is this setback further or not?
Yeah, this would be, if, if we had to do the eight-and-a-half-foot setback to the right-of-way, and then the additional five feet, then I would have about six feet between the building and the, uh, the setback to where I could, you know, build the pylon up and then over the building.
And that would require then taking out a lot of the palm trees, which we want to keep in.
If it's as thin as it is, why do we have to take out palm trees?
Uh, in order to effectively have visibility, Your Honor.
The, the palm trees tower above the building where this sign would be located.
I see, 'cause that looks very nice, too. Yes, please, comment.
So, so what, why is it that you, why is it that you want to put in the sign that you're talking about today, instead of the one that you can already put in based on code?
Fair question. Uh, we believe it would be more visible to people going east and west, uh, on the subject, uh, street, and it would cost less money. And, and again, we would keep, uh, the landscaping consistent with what staff and, uh, the Planning Commission, uh, wanted.
So the sign you're asking for today would be more visible to, for your business?
That is correct.
Yeah, and it's, it's better too, 'cause the LED message unit would be a lot lower than the forty-footer, so people would have a tendency to, to sort of maybe look up at the forty footer versus it being at eye level when you're driving.
Okay, and, and are, do you plan on putting other advertisement on there besides your own business?
No, uh, no, we are not.
Okay, thank you.
Could I ask just a quick question, uh, back? What are, why the denial from your office, please?
Very simply, staff recommended denial of this request based on the setback from the property line. Uh, in all other dimensions, in terms of the sign height, or the area, or the illumination, it conforms to code, it's just the setback that does not conform to our, uh, requirements. And you'll also note that staff did recommend approval of item number seventy, the review of condition. So, uh, again, it's just a setback that we had concerns with.
Thank you very much, I'm sorry, I interrupted. Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had the practical experience of trying to find these buildings, and I think twice, within a year, I turned into the wrong driveway because of the way the sign is. It really doesn't tell you where to go. It's kind of funny, but it's just odd, one of those creatures of code where and a more adequate solution is one that looks better, because the forty-foot sign is probably not gonna look, doesn't look nearly as good as one down low. I think that conforms more to what people wanna do on West Sahara, too, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it conforms a lot more with the, the look of Sahara. You don't see any sign over there cantilevering over any buildings.
No, thank you.
I, another question, um, because you said they're in the, um, owners' group in your building. What would preclude them from wanting to put up, so now you're sign, 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 sign? Is there anything in your code of, of regulations that will prohibit them from wanting to put up another sign and another sign?
Well, this property, uh, effectively is adjacent and is part of their property. Uh, to the east of, of that is Fletcher Jones Mercedes. To the east of that is Fletcher Jones Mercedes, and there's a break in the driveway, so there couldn't be another, another, another.
Okay.
Yeah, by code, if you look at this, um... You've got... This is the DeLuca sign?
Yes.
And then this is one of the Sterling Park signs?
Yes.
Then here's the other Sterling Park sign?
Yes.
And then we're asking for the sign right here.
Okay.
And by... By street frontage and the number of signs allowed, we would be maxed out with four. So, that would... And being a variance, if somebody wanted to put a sign up, they couldn't just put it up.
Okay, I would agree with that.
And the separation.
If Councilwoman Tarkanian's saying that turquoise ones are not too sweet-looking, I would certainly hope they get taken care of down the road. Thank you.
They would probably remind us of times when we were in very poor conditions.
Or early Las Vegas when everything was turquoise and pink.
That's right. Well, and a lot of the rest of the world was, too, at that time.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions down here?
Can I input one more thing?
Yes.
Also, with what we're doing, we're wanting to do an encroachment agreement, a three-and-a-half-foot encroachment agreement into the... To the easement. So, we were trying to get that all scheduled for... With this one meeting, but we're going to have to come back. Am I correct on that for the next... Next meeting to just address that, too?
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilwoman... Oh, excuse me. Anyone... Is this a... An open meeting? Comments? Yes, anyone wishing to be heard on this? Hearing none. Councilwoman Tarkanian, let's take item number seventy, please.
On item number seventy, I move to approve.
There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. On item number seventy-one, please.
On item number seventy-one, I would like to state that we have been out there twice by ourselves, and then a third time we met with all of you out there, and it does seem a little strange, but the way this is out there, the better way to do it is not to candidly put it atop across another building, which I have been told we discourage in planning to have the sign go over another building as it showed there. It does not look nearly as well as the other one would at twenty-five feet. And as we looked over, what could we do as far as where to place it and the setback problem? And that's where you would need to have the variance because there's really nothing that you can do. It's really not self-imposed, in my opinion. It's something that's there because of the conditions. The trees are there, they're beautiful trees. You'd have to take out some of them in order to put the sign up. The sign is... It's only because the distance between Sahara and the building is quite a bit different than DeLuca's, for example. And so, that wasn't your fault, and I move to approve.
Thank you. Thank you, there's a motion to approve. Please vote.
DeLuca got a lot of free publicity.
Yeah. Well, Neil Beller got some free publicity. Post, motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you all.
Well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, thank you.
And, you know, I'd just like to say how much I appreciated meeting with you and you are good citizens and what you're doing. I'm not just talking about the sign, but the other things in the area, and I know all of us appreciate that very much.
You know, if I could just say a couple words, we appreciate the time that you spent, Councilwoman, and Robin, who was with you. And we met for an hour and a half from four-thirty to six, and they had two other meetings that were going to take them to nine o'clock that night. So, I hope everyone understands that the people on the council work long and hard hours, and they... They see to the details, and we appreciate what you do for Las Vegas, and we appreciate this approval. Thank you.
Thank you. On behalf of Councilwoman Tarkanian, I'm sure she thanks you, too.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number seventy-two, SUP four-two-six-seven-eight, abance to item special use permit, public hearing. Applicant Planet Hyundai, owner TCP Real Property LP for possible action on a request for a special use permit for outdoor storage accessory at seventy-one fifty West Sahara. Ward one, Councilwoman Tarkanian, the staff recommends denial, the planning. Commission votes unanimously for approval. This is a public hearing, I declare it open. Is the applicant present, please?
Good afternoon again, Jennifer Roberts of Lionel Sawyer &amp; Collins, three hundred South Fourth Street, appearing on behalf of Planet Hyundai. This is an application for a special use permit for some storage bins that were actually placed on the property by the previous owner of the dealership. And these storage bins are normally allowed on these types of properties. However, in this case, we're seeking a special use permit so that it's allowed to penetrate the landscape buffer and not be enclosed by an eight-foot enclosure. This... The coloring is similar to the permitted trash enclosures that are next to it. It is buffered from the adjacent property by a wall, as well as on the other side of the wall is a ravine. And also, the other property is currently vacant. It was the former Harley-Davidson dealership. And when these were placed there, there were no complaints by them. If they were placed in an area that was permitted, it would actually cause more obstruction to the residences that are located behind the property and would also deter visibility with the current parking area. So, Planning Commission did unanimously recommend approval. We ask that you follow their recommendation, and I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
What is the street that faces these storage units, please?
Uh, there... Well, this is Sahara Avenue. The storage bins are on the east side halfway in between the property. So, they're located within the parking lot of Planet Hyundai, about halfway in. They're not clearly visible from Sahara Avenue.
And they... That entire property has no abutted residence, correct? It's all commercial there?
Uh, the property... There is residential behind it to the north of the property. There is a wall, but it... These storage bins do not abut that residential side of the property.
Any comments from our public? Please.
Thank you, Todd Farley, two forty North Nineteenth Street. Just to make a quick observation, in one of the photos, it looked like the dumpster was encroaching on that tree, but the tree is on the other side of the wall. I complained about that earlier, but it's... Doesn't have anything to do with these people.
Okay, thank you.
It is on the other side, correct?
The Hyundai, as an auto dealer, they... Moving in, or they already had a place, or what?
Uh, it's existing.
It's an existing?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I... And Miss what's her name? It says plan and staff, they kind of split, right? So, it's in your ballpark, excuse me. I said it's split, it's in your ballpark.
Anyone else wishing to be heard?
On this item, a hearing done. Um, I... Councilwoman Tarkanian, anybody from the council have any comments or questions?
Comments or questions from anybody sitting to my right or my left? Councilwoman, please.
I thought, oh, no. Here we go, because the people that live behind the car dealerships on Sahara have been very, very careful about what happens on the dealership properties and make sure... Making sure the conditions are met that were made years ago. But Jennifer's told me, if she comes out, or told my secretary, if she comes out, I'm sure that'll change her mind. And I told Jennifer she was absolutely right. I went out there and I saw, barely visible at all from Sahara, the... The next door area where the tree was growing, it's like a parking lot for the car agency that was there before. And even if it is resold, I don't think there would be any complaints from the new owners there because there weren't from the previous owners. And lastly, as far as the residences, and they're very picky, not one vote of concern was... Came to me, and the... The only one who could see it is a two-story, and it would be a very distant view. The only thing I would suggest, and this is just because if you look at your first picture where you show the dumpster, that's not the storage area, of course. On the right is the dumpster, and if you ever use these pictures again, I'd be sure you explain that. And so, I move for approval.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on the floor. Please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Thank you. We will now move on to item number seventy-three, ROC four-three-two-four-three, review of condition, public hearing. Applicant F.L. Smith, LLC, owner Ford Apache Commons LTD LLC, for possible action on a request for a review of conditions of a previously approved special use permit, SUP one-six-nine-one-one, to delete condition number three that states the sale of individual containers of any size beer, wine coolers, or screw tap... Uh, screw cap wine is prohibited. All such products shall remain in their original configuration as shipped by the manufacturer. Further, no repackaging of containers into smaller groups, smaller than the original shipping container size, shall be permitted at one-one-oh-one South Fort Apache. And this is Ward Two, Councilman Wolfson. Staff recommends approval. This is a public hearing, I now declare it open. Is the applicant present?
Yes, ma'am. Good afternoon, Jeff Warnick with Fabulous Freddy's Companies on the vice president of the company. Here, we wish that you would follow staff's recommendation and approve this removal of condition from this special use permit for us. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay, do we have any questions from the bench?
I have a question.
Yes.
You're wearing a tie.
Sorry?
You're wearing a tie.
Yes.
I have unusual.
Sorry?
You know, I think of Fabulous Freddy's, I mean, I think, you know... You know where I'm going with this, don't you, Jeff?
I... I understand. If Freddie were here, I don't think he would have a tie on, but...
I'm just giving you a hard tie.
Yes, thank you.
You look great, nice tie.
I appreciate that. I have other obligations this afternoon as well.
Um, an open hearing, please state your name and make your comments.
My name is Anthony Hart. I'm going to try to be Speedy Gonzales. It said, I want to pick on Mr. Weeford there? Roger. He's the last one of the day in... It's in Ward Two, and it said approval, so, hey, approve it, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion, Councilman Wolf?
Yeah, and what'd you say?
Counselman.
Everybody's having trouble with names today. You know, by Jeff's comments about Councilman Rossi recognizing his snazzy tie, he said he had other commitments, meaning if he didn't have other commitments, he'd come dressed like a slob, I guess.
That's not true. It was in conjunction with this most important meeting that I am here for.
My motion is for denial.
Well, I would be in big trouble with Freddie when I get back.
Just kidding. What I'd like to do is just take a couple of minutes to talk about a little history, and I want to thank you, Flynn, and Doug Rankin for putting together a little memorandum. What you're asking for, Jeff, has come actually before us on sixteen prior occasions in the last ten years or so. This was a condition which started back in two thousand... I'm sorry, back in nineteen ninety-nine, and there was a reason that we started putting these single-sale restrictions, and that was that back then there were certain concerns in certain areas where there were chronic inebriates. And those are Doug Rankin's words, I would have used some more simple words. But in any event, back then, there was a concern that in certain areas, there was a certain type of behavior that the council back then wanted to try and prohibit. So, they started adding these conditions as standard conditions, and it was just kind of a regular, routine thing to add this condition on the... Is it the SUP that they would add it on to, Flynn? So, in the last five or seven years, it's come to our attention that in many cases, there isn't a need to have this condition. So, on about sixteen occasions in the last ten years, there's been a request to delete the condition, and in all sixteen cases, the condition was deleted. So, I think that there is a need in certain places and certain situations to have this condition, but I don't think so in this case. And then, secondly, I appreciate you and Fred coming in and talking to me about your business model, because we had one of your competitors come before us a couple of weeks ago that had the same request, and they talked to us about their business model with regard to asking for identification for all people who purchase alcohol. And I was impressed that your company has the same or similar business model, which is anybody that attempts to purchase alcohol, whether they look fifteen or eighty-five, must show their identification. And you also have a system where the birthdate has to be entered into the cash register, and then you have managers that monitor those entries, so it's a... An impressive business model. So, I don't think this is a situation where we need to have this condition. So, my motion is to be consistent with staff's recommendation, and that is for approval to delete this condition.
Thank you. There's a motion, please vote. Please post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
And you look very handsome, and he'll knock it off next time.
I'm never going to live that down.
Okay, we move on to item number seventy-four. I'd instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings and dangerous buildings or nuisance litter abatements. Thank you. And we will move on to item number seventy-five, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name, please. For the record, the amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? We will set the timer three minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Anthony Hart, one-two-three, David. I won't take three minutes naturally. I have three famous ladies, and they're part of our government. One of them is Mrs. Kennedy, the president's wife, and the other is Martin Luther King's wife. So, these are two great ladies, and these are... When they were living, they sent me that. And this is a letter from a Tuskegee Airmen that was a pilot during World War Two. So, his wife, whatever, she wrote me, wrote me a present. I just want to let you that I specialize in great people, and I... I love you, too, Miss Mayor, whatever. Have a good day, oh, y'all, love you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward and state your name.
Joe Maviglia, forty-four eighty-seven East Lake Mead, page thirty. Uh, Your Honor, I have two items, so I would appreciate a little time to explain about both items. Please.
Uh, we'll give you one more minute. Well, you can do two minutes on each, I'm sure you can do it.
I think so.
I know.
I think so.
I think you are, you're a very bright man. I can know you can do two minutes on each, one extra minute, please, City Clerk.
My God, I'm going to go... I'm going to go home walking on cloud nine. Now, I'm not here to impress any of you council people. I may say things from time to time that you're going to disagree and dislike me. Well, I'm not here to win a popularity contest, I can assure you. First of all, the towing industry is out slicking the people in the fact that they put quick-snatch systems on the back of their towing trucks. And they have spotters that work the trailer parks, and the very moment the spotter sees a vehicle that parked, and especially mine, I had to drop and go into the house, otherwise I would have did my problem in my pants. And when I come out, my truck was on the rack. Luckily, I called the manager, and I had... They told the guy to remove my truck. But what they're doing is they're taking advantage of poor people that live in these trailer parks. And some of the people move... Drive up, they want to move something into their house, and if they're on the street less than thirty seconds, and the tow truck driver spots it, they'll come in and snatch it. And they snatch it, it's called a quick-snatch system, and it's up on the rack, ready to be pulled out of the trailer park. Now, they negotiate release for up to two-hundred and fifty dollars. And if they don't release it, then they take it down, and by the time you're through trying to get your vehicle back, it's six, seven hundred dollars. I don't know if you can do anything about it. I don't know if there's an ordinance that should be changed to protect the people or force the trailer parks to put a bigger sign up to protect the people. force the trailer parks to put a bigger sign up to protect the people. But what they're doing to the poor people is unconscionable. So if you can do something about it, I would please have you consider that. The other item is the Bank of America and the foreclosure problem. Now, the foreclosure problem developed when open-ended mortgages were led to unsuspecting people, and then they tripled the mortgage rate and forced these people out of their homes. That was going on for quite a while. Now, it's a, it's a disaster of what's going on. And when I read in the paper that you're planning to do something about it, to maybe file a, and charge these people with a misdemeanor, I think is fantastic. I think you're right on the right track, and I think you should go all overboard with it. Okay? In the meantime, I'm developing a retrofitting project for mobile homes, houses, and apartments for low-income housing and employment. And it's a plumbing project that I'm gonna get it off the ground. Trust me, I'm gonna make it. But when I do, it takes the support of everybody. This council, you, your honor, the people, and people have to have affordable housing, affordable living. They have to have jobs. And I'm on the threshold of doing that, and I'm gonna make it fly, guaranteed.
Good. Thank you.
I want to thank you for allowing me to speak, and I'm gonna get it done.
Thank you. Good luck. Anyone else? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Talk 40240 North Lincoln Street. Over the weekend, MF Global tanked, and is gonna take a lot of, most of the capitalization of this and several banks along with it. If you've been reading The Economist Magazine and The Wall Street Journal, you'll know that some forty-five, forty-six, forty-seven percent of our pension funds in the United States are invested in Europe. My concern is, is this. If the pension funds go, the city is still on the hook to fund, to make sure that these people get their payments. I mean, there could be a bloodbath there. The second thing is, and Councilman Coffin and Councilman Ross, I would ask for your help on this. When Zappos dot, dot com takes over this, they're bringing in a young group of people. They're gonna want the bike path, and I'm on a quest to reclaim the bike path. Now, code enforcement Stephanie, she's gonna call me today regarding the Solon Tire. Now, but, and the Las Vegas Housing Authority does a beautiful job of keeping up the trail underneath the I-95. But when it comes out of Mesquite, over the years, that's all, the, from, from Ninth and around Ninth and Mesquite, all the way under the freeway to where it used to come out at, at the casino center there, it's all been fenced off. We've got a, a parking ticket citation thing there. There's no reason in the world that we can't take down those fences and get that bike path up. Now, it's been about thirty-three years, and, but I think Century Lake has a lease on some land there, but there's only one truck that's been parked there for about a year. You know, there's no reason we can't get that back, take down that fence, and bring back that bike trail, so, so Zappos dot com can use it. Now, Solon Tire thinks that they've taken adverse possession of that, that bike trail in front of their place at Eastern and Stewart. I asked, at the RTC, I asked former Commissioner Woodbury, because he's a lawyer, he, he's up on that. And I says, can they take that through adverse possession? And he says, you gotta go all kinds of stuff. And he says, no. But if you go down there right now, you'll see that, that Solon Tire has got tires chained across the banister, so you can't use the trail. They've got cars parked in the trail in front of the places and along the side where Mesquite comes to its circle. And this is not gonna be an overnight thing, but we're gonna have to eventually convince these people that, look, we want our bike trail back. You know, you've had it for thirty-some years, now we want it back. Thank you very much. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to item number seventy-six. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. Is there any member of the city council who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda? I will start with Councilman Wolfson.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. Never know who you're gonna go to first.
I know, 'cause I don't know. I wait for the whim.
It's like a guessing game every two weeks. Well, thank you. And on a, on a serious note, I'd like to first take a moment to recognize a very important, and this isn't the person I'm talking about. Could we take this off the screen for a second? Thank you. I want to recognize a very important member of our community who passed away this past weekend, Charlie Desiderio. Charlie's energy, dedication, and passion for this community touched many of us on many levels. We are working with his family to pay homage to this wonderful man, and we're gonna be sharing more about his contributions to Las Vegas in the very near future. For now, I would ask that you keep his wife, Marie, and daughters, Deana and Donna, in your thoughts and prayers as they struggle to deal with life without Charlie. Secondly, on a little bit more upbeat note, this Saturday, November fifth, at nine-thirty a.m., I will be at the Step It Up for Lupus Walk at Palo Verde High School. This event is coordinated by the Colors of Lupus and is greatly supported by the Palo Verde family of students, parents, and teachers. Lupus has touched their school directly, as two of their students are currently living with lupus. If you would like to join us, you can register for the walk at www dot colors, colors of lupus, nevada dot org. There is no cost to register a team and no minimum pledge requirement to participate. One more time, this Saturday, November fifth, nine-thirty a.m., at the Palo Verde High School, a Lupus Walk. Next, on Saturday, December tenth, starting at noon, is the annual Lakes Festival of Lights. Come out and join us for this free event in the Lakes community at Sahara and Lake Sahara Drive. It's behind Citibank. There's a craft show, car show, live entertainment, a visit from Santa, and a lighted boat parade at dusk. Aren't you gonna be there?
What was the date again, please?
Saturday, December tenth.
No, Friday is, oh, December tenth. That's way out there, yes.
Yeah, five, five or so weeks from now.
Yes.
I think, aren't you?
Yes, I think so, yes.
I think Mayor Goodman is going to, in her first year as mayor, be out there and maybe be the grand poobah on the boat that goes by the lake. And if I can give you any warning, dress warm. Dress warm. It gets really cold out there.
Bring your fishing pole.
Yeah. And then finally, now we can have on the screen our missing child. This young lady I'm highlighting today has been missing since May twenty-sixth of this year. That's about six months. Let's see if we can get this young lady home and safe to her family. Her name is Samela, and let me get it right, Samela Pollard, and she is sixteen years old, five foot three inches tall, weighs a hundred and fifteen pounds, brown eyes, black hair with golden extensions. She was last seen in the area of Sand Hill and Flamingo, and likes to hang out in local parks. If you know where Samela is, please contact Nevada Child Seekers at seven oh two four five eight seven zero zero nine, or Las Vegas Metro Missing Persons Unit at seven oh two eight two eight three one one one. And as always, I say this, the more people we have looking for these missing children, the better chances of finding them. And I'm very pleased to say that we've almost located about half of the kids that we've been highlighting for the last couple of years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Tonight, from six to seven p.m., the Meadows Walkable Community Plan will be discussed at the Bill and Lily Henrick YMCA at forty-one forty-one Meadows Lane. And I would recommend anybody who lives in that area of the Meadows Mall, Meadows Lane, all those with homes in that area, attend, please, this meeting. What's being proposed is an absolutely spectacular thing for your neighborhood, which will greatly enhance what we have been doing for sustainability in the city. Then this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, November fourth and fifth, both Glenn Heather Association and Rancho Nevada Estates will be having community yard sale events. For more information, you can contact my office at two-two-nine-two-two-nine-nine. And then Tuesday, November fifteenth, at five-thirty p.m., we will have our next business meeting for our new West Charleston Corridor Business Group, and we're very fortunate that Mayor Goodman will be joining us then. And I will tell you, all these people are very excited that you will be there. And lastly, if I may just go back to being a teacher, my very first meeting here in the council, a woman came and complained about the fact that we didn't protect our children enough, and that we had lost six, and we had six youngsters within eighteen months that were going either to or from school. And I, I was very pleased that we then worked with that lady, and we were able to build that group called Lookout Kids About, that, you know, we got the grant for, for making the sidewalks greater, and for all of the stop signs and things like that. But what's happened recently, when you look at the fact of those three little girls getting hit by a car in a crosswalk, when you look at the thirteen-year-old girl who was killed, when you look at what's happening, I just hope that maybe Lookout Kids About can get a sister organization going that will help us emphasize to drivers how careful you have to be. And I don't know why one or two minutes makes that much difference. Of course, I'm late at a lot places, but, but I just think it's very important. And then lastly, I would like to recommend to all those who have teenagers, if you get a chance to watch on ESPN, they showed it last night, and I know they'll be showing it again, there is a special out on a basketball player called Chris Heron. And Chris Heron was a player that my husband coached at Fresno State, and I have never seen a document, Terry, that so fully expressed the problems of drug use and alcoholism than this one did. You have a young man, great health, good-looking. He ended up playing for the Boston Celtics in the NBA, and, and he married his wife that he'd met in sixth grade. They had children together, and he couldn't hold it all together because he was fighting this demon. And sometimes we don't realize how difficult it is for people to get off the drugs. And if you watch this film, and he's very open, he goes out now, he's off drugs, and he goes out and speaks to prisoners, he speaks to the military, he speaks to seventh graders, high schoolers, and you watch them listening to him, and you'll see tears in their eyes, not anybody talking to anybody else, not anybody being distracted. That's how strong his message is. So just recently, we lost someone from Gorman that my son, one of my grandsons had played soccer with. And it was, it was such a big tragedy, and it's a tragedy in the fact that we, we're going around living these happy lives we have, and having these fun things we have, and we have a youngster who might've had a concussion, people didn't notice it, he's left behind in a home, and he dies. This is a senior that had his whole life ahead of him, and I'm also wanting to emphasize, please, I don't know everything that happens, and none of us do, just watch what's happening all the time in homes. Thank you. And I'm sorry, but that's a teacher in me, and I got elected, so you have to take it.
I know. Very, very meaningful comments. And let's go down to the end, who's just blown his nose, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, your honor. I did wipe it. Thank you. And we'll shake hands after.
Okay, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mayor.
Anything going on in your life?
Absolutely. Thanks for asking. I, I have to announce the, the well-patented shredding event that I'm having, and Mayor Protem Stavros Anthony has the patent and all the royalty rights to shredding events that the city of Las Vegas sponsors anyway, certainly in Ward Six. So Mayor Protem, thank you.
What's the maximum on free?
Free? Free is five boxes.
Okay.
What's maximum one free for you? We're having a free shredding event, and it's interesting, because when Mayor Protem started doing this, when he first got elected, I thought, gee, we're never gonna do that in Ward Six. And gosh darn it, if this isn't a great thing, there are people lined up before we even start the event going down the street. Well, Saturday, November fifth, ten a.m. is when we're gonna start shredding, ten to noon, at the Centennial Active Adult Center on sixty-six oh one North Buffalo Drive. Bring your documents, your old checkbooks, anything that might be of use to a bad guy to steal your identity. Bring it down there. We'll get it shredded up. We, of course, we partnered with Opportunity Village, as Mayor Protem does, and I think other councilmembers do in their ward. There is a limit of five boxes. I mean, if you come with seven, I'm not gonna run you off, but we're gonna do what we can to, to get folks taken care of. And again, November eleventh, Friday, two thousand and eleven, it is the Veterans Day Parade, the largest Veterans Day parade west of the Mississippi, and that's quite significant. Parade will start at ten a.m. It will be held downtown on Fourth Street, and will start at Hoover Avenue and finish at Stewart. We expect over forty thousand spectators, and there's over a hundred and thirty entrants already, and it's just growing. And we're gonna see the wounded warriors out there, and we're having a flyover, too. So this is kind of exciting. So folks, come on down to Veterans Day Parade, November eleventh, and I think...
And I do want to ask Councilman Coffin, could you make an announcement about the concert on Fremont Street Experience the night of the tenth of November, please?
It's been a pleasant week, your honor. First of all, I might say congratulations to you on your ceremonial handing out of trophies at the soccer tournament, the very successful Mayor's Cup Soccer Tournament this past weekend. Three hundred and twenty teams participated up in Councilman Stavros Anthony's ward. It was, he was missed, but he's still recovering. So, yes, the U.S. Army Reserve Band is coming to Las Vegas. U.S. Army, that's the branch of service that I was in, and I'm very proud to say all three hundred members are gonna be playing.
Wow.
At the Fremont Street Experience on Friday evening, pretty early. Now, that is something to see. And then they'll be walking. Now, the funny thing is, they'll be walking right in front of the Pleasant Memory Wedding Chapel. There's a free ad for them. On eleven eleven eleven, Pleasant Memory Wedding Chapel on Fourth and Gas has been swamped with people who want to get married. More than two-hundred-and-fifty couples want to get married. They didn't know there was gonna be a parade right in front of the building locking them in. Our city staff has worked really well, trying to make sure that the cars, the guests, and all the attendants can get in there to perform their functions, so that they might enjoy the rest of the weekend as married couples. So there's a lot happening in Ward Three. I just was shy, your honor, and you kept trying to draw it out of me.
Right. But that program on the Fremont Street Experience, that band, there are gonna be three different venues, and what great music, and who better to be playing that? So we're really excited. It's gonna be a fabulous weekend.
That's right.
So thank you very much. And if you want to get married again, we could get down to the chapel.
Pleasant Memory.
Once is enough for me. And now, Councilman Anthony, Mayor Protem, the shredding business is yours, and anything else you want to talk about?
I've been mentioned several times, so that's all I have.
Okay. Is there any, any other business we have? Anybody sitting out here supporting us that would like to say anything? Hearing not lost?
One more thing, you know, one of the most important questions I have, and Councilman Ross, you're looking at me waiting to see what I have to say, is that every year during the patriotic parade, you wear the most patriotic...
Shirt.
Something. So what are you gonna be wearing this year to exhibit your patriotism?
Wow, now you've put me on the spot.
We both have to go out and buy shirts, right?
I know, because you have a shirt very similar to mine. You, too, will get very patriotic, and, gosh, I don't know. I think, I think we should challenge the entire council to wear something patriotic on Veterans Day to support the men and women who served in our military forces. So I'm glad you brought that to our attention, Councilman. The challenge is on.
I think that's great, and the main thing is, we are gonna walk, and we are handing out flags. So way to go. Put on your orthotics, or whatever the older folk wear, and hope he has them. So I'm not gonna go any further. We've done enough. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.